Live from El Paso County, Texas, the Veterans Capital of the USA. From inside to the Alicia Chacon Commissioners' Courtroom of the Enrique Moreno County Courthouse, you are watching the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meeting.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Thursday, January 30th, 2025. Commissioners' Court is meeting in special open session. Today, we are joined by ASL interpreters Tamara Marquez and Dario Garcia. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag, the United States of America, the Republic of
Which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Item number three is public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. Judge, would you like to make opening comments before we begin?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I was caught off guard. No, thank you. Welcome to Commissioners' Court on behalf of myself. We, as always, we welcome you. We've got a great agenda. I think you're the, we keep asking the community to tune in because some of the topics are going to, you know, impact either neighborhoods or where they, where they go, the quality of life. So, thank you very much for being here, each and every one of you. I expect a very productive meeting. Do want to take the opportunity to, a moment of silence on that crash in DC. It's just some of the people on the airplane that, you know, when these things happen, it's just such a difficult thing for us. So if you don't mind, we could take a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you for your thoughts and prayers going forward. Thank you.
Yes. Item number three is public comment. We do not have speakers sign up for the regular public comment, so take no action.
I believe Mr. Henryon was general public comment, the first one.
He will be for item 4A.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Item four from the regular agenda, item 4A. Receive a presentation and discuss items regarding the development, implementation, and oversight of the FY 2024 Multi-Year Capital Plan for El Paso County, including project selections, performance objectives and outcomes, performance management, operational management, corresponding financial planning related to capital investments and operational needs, and general capital direction related to the 2024 Capital Improvement Bond and other future public finance instruments and opportunities. And we do have several speakers signed up for this item.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Jose Landero, Strategic Capital Development. This workshop today will be a lot of information. There's been a lot of movements regarding the court's ongoing capital planning efforts that we want to present today. There's various facets of that that include legal details, and so we will be asking for the court to hear from McCall, the county's outside bond counsel, on some of that discussion. Today, you'll also hear an overview of the financial information and scenarios that the court may be considering as you consider a new debt issuance for 2025. There's various scenarios that Steeple has prepared and briefed the court on during their Quarterly Four update a few weeks ago that will be represented to the court for your information and consideration. And then we also want to make sure that on the, from the staff level, that we give you a comprehensive overview of all the activity that's been underway that affects your planning process, to include some of the legislation that's been filed during this latest legislative session that affects local government's authority to issue, issue debt, and how some of that interplays with potential opportunities that the court may be considering this coming year. We're also going to ensure that we give the court an update on some of the work that's been happening that's not as visible, but very, but paramount to the success of successfully launching the Go Bond initiatives and all the projects that are located within the three approved propositions that voters authorized during the November election. And then we'll also spend a good amount of time presenting information and allowing the court to have a discussion on the essential public purpose projects, which, as the court recalls, you all have set an internal policy to, to have your INS tax rates fund essential public purpose projects, and you've dedicated a nickel or five cents of your tax rate to do that. As in years past, when we are getting ready to retire old debt, we have opportunities to issue new debt in its place. That allows us to continue to invest in deferred maintenance needs that the county has identified. And so part of the project list that you will, you will see today is the secondary product of the capital planning process that was under, that we undertook last year, that involved the Bond Advisory Committee and all of the public meetings and public hearings. These projects were focused more on the essential needs of the county, and they included water, stormwater, flood control, and improvements and enhancements and renovations to existing facilities. And so there's been some changes to that list, given the results of the November 5th election, that we'll provide you details on. But we wanted the court to have a discussion on that list, see if there is any questions that we may be able to answer, especially as you start to look at what your financial scenarios might be for debt issuance in 2025. And well, today is not intended to be a final decision-making meeting either. The intent of the workshop today is to present all this information, which is a lot, to the court, to allow you all to start to reengage in this, in this planning mindset. I know that our, our focus as a county shifted last August when the court ordered the election to information sharing and engagement with the community about what was on the November ballot since then. We've had a chance to begin working on taking steps to reactivate that planning process on what the debt issuances will look like in 2025 and, and out from here, going all the way to 2028. And so today's workshop is that first step. We do have some, some timelines that we'd like to recommend the court adhere to so that we can meet all of the deadlines associated with providing notice to structuring our tax rate to the tax assessor as we get ready to head into the next fiscal year budget process. And so that means having the court make a decision on structure, projects by early March, early to mid-March is really our timeline, our window. So, we anticipate being very engaged with the court over the month of February. There's a few meetings that we've tentatively identified as meetings where we can provide updates and continue to have discussions with the court to structure whatever issuance type the court would like to pursue in 2025. We're looking right now tentatively at presenting again to the Commissioners' Court on February 10th, February 24th, and February 27th again, to continue this process and this conversation, before asking the court to make a decision beginning on March 3rd and March 10th, right? Depending on the type of, of issuance that you'd like to pursue, there may be some additional time that the court has. But again, right now, in terms of planning out what the scenarios look like, our timeline for the court to make a decision is sometime in early March. And so I believe that we are ready to, to continue that conversation with the court, and your feedback and questions will really help staff ensure that we're supporting you and meeting your objectives of funding these projects, managing the county's tax rate, and being the fiscal stewards that the court is charged with being over the next several years. So, with those opening comments and that overview, the first part of the meeting, we do have McCall, which is the county's bond counsel, on the line. We would like to provide the court some updated information in executive session because some of it is, is, is coming, is coming from outside legal counsel. And so we would ask the, the court to entertain a motion to retire into executive session so that you can be briefed by McCall on a few matters related to your ongoing planning process.
We have a motion to move the item into executive session by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Olgu. Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Wait a minute, it says Commissioner Leon on there.
Yeah, it said Leon on there. I don't know.
Motion carries. There's, we have to make a change on the system, but the motion carries. Judge, would you like to hear public comment first? Because we have one person on teams and three others in person. Yes? Have them go first? Okay. The first person we have signed up for public comment, Mr. Robert Henron.
Are we gonna, are we gonna go straight into executive session? Or are we gonna have the presentation from staff first before we go into executive session? I think we're going straight into...
We, McCall has a hard stop at 10:00 AM, and so we'd ask for the court to allow us to go into executive session and have that discussion first.
Mr. Henryon, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Rob Henryon. I work with the U.S. Geological Survey, and I wanted to thank the staff members of Commissioner Stout and Commissioner Coronado for allowing me some time to explain a program we're trying to develop in the southern New Mexico, Rio Grande, El Paso area. The program we're trying to establish is called the EPA Urban Waters Federal Partnership. It's a program designed by the EPA to help local communities identify issues that are of concern to them and then work with federal partners to try to get those issues resolved or addressed. And so the, the key thing is this, is that the, the programs are chosen by the local communities. It's not dictated by Washington or anything like that. And then, and then the, the program here in New Mexico, we would have an urban waters committee, and they would help the local community members find funding to address whatever issues that's important to them. So there are currently 21 urban waters programs throughout the country, including what in Albuquerque and what in San Antonio. And then some of the national federal partners in this program include the Department of Interior, the Army Corps of Engineers, the Department of Energy, Department of Transportation, USGS and such. And then recently, we've been holding meetings with local community groups, and we've had good responses, and we have members on our steering committee from the BOR, IBWC, Corps of Engineers, the City of El Paso, City of Las Cruces. And so, the idea is again to solicit suggestions and programs from local community members and then find a way to help them act, get acted on, and get those successful. So, basically, we have some examples of this. Has been the, in Albuquerque, they have an urban waters wildlife refuge they developed with this program. They do a pilot stormwater program. San Antonio has done a trail systems development program. Grand Rapids, Michigan, has done a program in which they want to put the rapids back in the Grand River by removing some lowhead dams. So the scope of the projects for these various communities is, is widely, is in a big scale. There can be very small ones to very large community projects that go over several years. So, what are the key things we wanted to do in this meeting is explain that the critical portion of this program is to identify an ambassador. So once the urban waters committee is stood up and approved by a, the U.S., or by the EPA, then we would work to identify an ambassador within the group, and that'd be like a professional staff member who would act as a coordinator and take input from various community members, various agencies, and then try to identify solutions to help, you know, address those programs or those questions. And so this person would be like a nexus of information. Basically, the areas that we would be concerned with would be the El Paso area, the southern New Mexico area, probably up New Mexico area, probably up to Las Cruces. And the urban waters tag is basically, it's a narrow window, but the committee could expand it to include, you know, rural communities as well as the large urban areas. So, but anyways, getting back to the roles of the ambassadors, that would be a person that would advocate for local partners within the entity and then help identify sources of funding to, you know, complete the task that they wish, and then also help them write proposals. And it would be a networking program so that this ambassador could reach out to us, our federal partners, our national federal partners, but also our local partners to help these small community or these small groups get funding to address their projects. And again, this is not a top-down program. This is a, it's a locally driven program. So the, the goals of this program would be determined by a local community, and it could be what's important to them.
Time?
Green infrastructure, excuse me.
You can go ahead quickly, just sort of wrap up.
Sure, yeah. So the idea is that it could identify various projects and then, and then find funding and ways to complete the projects. So right now, we're in the process of identifying sources of funding for ambassador in this program. And so we're hoping to get multiple sources of funding to fund this ambassador that can act as a coordinator for various activities within the El Paso, southern New Mexico area.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time. Commissioner Stout?
Yeah. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Just, just real quickly, I wanted to give some context to some of the public speakers that might be coming. So when it, when it comes to the, the issue that the gentleman was just talking about, my staff and Commissioner Coronado, the staff have been working together to look at, trying to implement some green projects, green infrastructure within the context of the bonds that we, that we got passed, and also the capacity that we have moving forward. So I just wanted to let the court know what's going on. And then also, some other, there's some other public here to comment on, on this issue in regards to the Coliseum. And, you know, we, and I'll, and I'll get into a little bit more, kind of, kind of what my proposal is, but, you know, I've heard from members of the community that, you know, the Coliseum failed by such a small margin that, you know, and, and talking with my staff and, and others, I just felt like we may, we may want to talk about seeing if the Coliseum is something we can put back on the ballot this year. Out of 223,000 votes, it only failed by like 700 votes. It was a very small margin, and I feel like some of the outreach that we did at the beginning was not fully on regarding the Coliseum because we still didn't know if it was going to be taken by the federal government. And so I think we, we could probably do a better job of informing the public about funding that project and possibly getting it funded this year, especially taking into account, we're, I mean, we're going to get the presentation on a lot of the laws that are going through, the bills that are going through the legislative session right now that might preempt us from doing things with, with, with public debt finance. And so we're kind of like throwing off here because I was expecting to have the presentation first, and then, and then that would provide the context and for, for the public comment. So there's members here that are here to comment about the Coliseum that have expressed interest in, in the proposal to look at the Coliseum on the ballot again this year.
You're welcome to reverse it. I mean, we could have the presentation before we.
I don't know, we can do, and go back out and count the presentation, but.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you all had that context because, you know, people are coming and talking about certain issues, and we haven't had the, we haven't been able to set it up yet, basically.
But if our bond counsel and legal, they need some, I think there are some questions we need to ask in executive session, for sure. If we don't have access to that, we'd have to do it for some other time.
And Judge, if the court would like to have a discussion on, on the topic that Commissioner Stout just brought up, McCall's staff that deal with elections and the calling of an election, and that matter is available, and that's actually one of the reasons why we wanted the court to, they have a hard stop at 10:00. And so if there's any questions specific to that, that we can interface with bond counsel on, in addition to some of the other conversations that we've been having, it might be helpful for the court to hear that information and come out and then continue to, to engage with the public at that point.
Yeah, I think it'll help us put everything else in what we can and cannot do. So, okay.
The next public comment?
We have bond counsel until 10:00, so we probably should go into executive, and if, and if y'all don't mind waiting about half an hour, I don't know if that's okay.
And anticipate us being about half an hour with bond counsel?
Okay. Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay, Commissioner's Court will recess into executive session to discuss item 4A pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Commissioner's Court will reconvene to take official action.
So today, we're celebrating that there will be three neighborhoods who are now going to get access to wastewater, which is basically being able to connect to the Lower Valley Water District's sewer system.
Wow, it's emotional, you know? We're feeling so happy for our community, especially for the families that we have in the, in the county.
We know that the septic systems that people use are more than 30 years old, and they're causing contamination issues, which are a primary issue for people's well-being and health.
Yeah, it's, we'll be living with a septic tank, that can be a problem for environmental communities. And now that we're working together with the Lower Valley and the county and getting some fundings for get this project, so we're so happy with that.
It's already started, all right? And it's going to take somewhere around six to eight months.
So at the County of El Paso, we decided to prioritize these types of projects to be able to connect these communities to water and wastewater services. We invested about $40 million of our American Rescue Plan Act dollars that we received from the federal government in 2022. We invested those funds to be able to partner with the Lower Valley Water District to be able to connect these neighborhoods.
It would have taken us another 15 years to come up with the money to be able to do this. So we're very grateful to the county for having sponsored us through this project.
Well, it's groundbreaking for three new hangars. And this is something that we, we started talking about back in 2013. So it's been a long ways to get here. A lot of people say, well, this airport's like an overnight success. Well, maybe, but it took 55 years to get to this day. We're sitting on a gold mine. This is a, this is a jam. So as the years go on, you're going to see that this will become a regional airport. We're excited, and I know this is a great opportunity for the local residents and for the entire county.
So during the past five years, the county has been successful in obtaining about $20 million worth of federal, state, and local funding to be able to expand services here in FABENS. So with some money from the Economic Development Administration through the Congresswoman's office, we were able to obtain a $5 million grant, which helped fund the design of eight brand-new hangars, and then the construction of three of those eight. So by the end of this project, we'll see three brand-new hangars, and we'll have the design for five additional hangars, which will be ready to begin construction as soon as the funding is identified and obtained. And that's certainly going to be something that the county has continued to work hard on, to obtain the funding to build those final five hangars. So by the end, we'll have eight brand-new hangars that can be used by local pilots to store their planes. They can be used by some of our community partners like UTEP. So I'm incredibly proud of all of the investment that the county has made in these past few years, and the investment that I know we will continue to make to make the FABENS Airport the best that it can be.
Skateboarding is one of those sports where, you know, you have kids who aren't necessarily into the traditional sports like football and basketball, and, and this gives them a place to go. It gives them a place to develop a sense of community.
We have Agua Dulce, Estrella, Talliegos.
Yeah!
This park in particular, Estrella, it consists of new skate parks, new basketball court, and new playground equipment, which is more of an adventure course.
Initially, it was jam-packed, but as the equipment gets older, less, less people were showing up. But now with this new equipment and the new build, I can almost guarantee you it is going to be jam-packed.
So we already have a skate park here in Agua Dulce, and we have a basketball court, but they haven't been renovated for many years. So we're going to completely renovate them and create a new skate park, a brand-new skate park.
And this is going to be a much better design. It's going to have a lot more exciting features to it. I think it's something that the community will appreciate. But it will be made of concrete, so we expect it to last longer than I'm going to be around.
You know, I know that the youth of our community, and not just from the outline areas of the county, but inside the City of El Paso, are going to come out and enjoy this place. And I know it's really going to be a hit with all the young people in the community, so I'm really proud of that.
Held two public input sessions where skaters told the designer what they wanted to see in the, in the skate park. It's got all the technical street stuff. It's good for beginners, for intermediates, for advanced. I think there's a five-stair, so if you really want to challenge yourself, you can gap down from the five-stair. Or if you're old and you just want to cruise around, or if you're young and you just want to learn, you can flow around the whole park.
And just like always, this, this court has been very frugal with tax money, and this in conjunction with other grants is paid for by grant money, grant funding that's coming to El Paso.
This project was possible by a grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife. The grant is a total of $2.8 million, which would be distributed between all the parks.
So parks have been a priority for the county for many, many years. We understand how important parks are to our communities.
Our citizens, our, you know, our constituents deserve no better than, you know, a beautiful place for their kids can come out and enjoy.
I just want to thank everyone who stepped up to the plate to make this happen. It's going to be an awesome facility, and I can't wait to roll around with the locals when it's done.
What's more essential than water and wastewater service for the community? And these communities have lived without this, you know, essential service for, you know, four decades, five decades probably, and many other communities here as well. We are thankfully, the county is working on other projects in this community as well as the Lower Valley to make sure that we bring these essential services to the community.
One, two, and three.
This is going to be the start of the first-time water and wastewater project for several communities here in the Cano Tio area. We are very, very proud, we're very fortunate, actually, that this has really come to fruition. There was funds dedicated for these projects, but the bids came in higher than we expected. And thankfully, with help of the community who came and advocated in front of Commissioners' Court to make sure that we dedicated additional funds so we could get this project, you know, going and started. Otherwise, if the court hadn't dedicated this extra money, we wouldn't be here, and this may not have happened. We're very, very proud of the way that the community came together, advocated, to get the additional funds for this project, and it's just a blessing, and we want to thank everybody that had helped in this, getting this event done.
This community doesn't currently have a park.
Well, this is a linear park for square dance, something we've been working on for, for, you know, a little over 12 years.
We incorporated an area for them to do, you know, activities, walk, and like I said, also a place to gather. So this project will take approximately 150 days. It consists of a linear trail that starts on Montana, ends on Frankie Lane, and it's a 10-foot-wide trail, so it will be a very interactive trail throughout. It will also have native landscaping, and we've also incorporated drainage.
I think it's going to add, it's going to look beautiful. They're going to, well, the trail for us to walk is going to be safer for us, an area designated for walking, you know, with your family. So I think it's going to be something, you know, a great improvement to our community.
Why should people that live in the city have more access to, to the benefits, quality of life?
I've been here since I'm, since I was three years old, I'm 40, so I've seen the whole thing, you know, so the whole. you know. So the whole improvement that has been in our community has been really great.
From street paving to the park, to the lights, to everything you see out here, I am so grateful to the court because I'm only one vote of five that can make things like this happen. Today, we have lights on the lake, and it's jam-packed outside. People are having a good time. And really, this is what El Paso deserves. People are excited about the season. They're excited about their lake. They're excited about the lights. So this is a really good night for families to bond and to have a good time.
So everyone was so excited. One, when all of the lights came on, the beautiful Christmas tree was lit. But then also when they saw our special guest, which was Santa. So now we have a long line of kids waiting to tell Santa what they want for Christmas this year. And that's, of course, what we want. We want children to be able to come, to be happy, to see Santa, get their photo with him, get to see all of the beautiful lights. We want this to be a special time and a special place for our families here in El Paso.
We have 70 different light displays. We have a variety. There's interactive lights as you drive through. A lot of our lights are on display, are sound activated. So as we approach them, they come on. We do have a drive-through along Escarate Lake, so you can stay in your car. You can see the displays. I just hope folks come out, enjoy it. I think it's a good time. I think it's very unique. We really want to make this a fun time for the folks throughout El Paso County.
Oh, I think like everybody should come and check it out. It's pretty, pretty nice out here. My husband saw it on like social media, so we decided to check it out. And we love the lights, the little setup for the pictures, and it's pretty, pretty nice.
El Paso's a beautiful place. We've got some beautiful music, beautiful lights, incredible people. We're the best community in the country and the best region. So wishing all of you a Merry Christmas and an amazing, amazing 2025.
So today, we're celebrating that there will be three neighborhoods who are now going to get access to wastewater, which is basically being able to connect to the Lower Valley Water District's sewer system.
Wow, it's emotional. You know, we're feeling so happy for our community, especially for the families that we have in the county.
We know that the septic systems that people use are more than 30 years old and they're causing contamination issues, which are a primary issue for people's well-being and health.
Yeah, it's always been living with a septic tank. It can be a problem for environmental communities. And now that we're working together with the Lower Valley and the county and getting some fundings for get this project. So we're so happy with that.
It's already started, all right? And it's going to take somewhere around six to eight months.
So at the County of El Paso, we decided to prioritize these types of projects to be able to connect these communities to water and wastewater services. We invested about $40 million of our American Rescue Plan Act dollars that we received from the federal government in 2022. We invested those funds to be able to partner with the Lower Valley Water District to be able to connect these neighborhoods.
It would have taken us another 15 years to come up with the money to be able to do this. So we're very grateful to the county for having sponsored us through this project.
Well, it's groundbreaking for three new hangars. And this is something that we started talking about back in 2013. So it's been a long ways to get here. A lot of people say, well, this airport's like an overnight success. Well, maybe, but it took 55 years to get to this day. We're sitting on a gold mine. This is a jam. So as the years go on, you're going to see that this will become a regional airport. We're excited, and I know this is a great opportunity for the local residents and for the entire county.
So during the past five years, the county has been successful in obtaining about $20 million worth of federal, state, and local funding to be able to expand services here in Fabens. So with some money from the Economic Development Administration through the Congresswoman's office, we were able to obtain a $5 million grant, which helped fund the design of eight brand-new hangars and then the construction of three of those eight. So by the end of this project, we'll see three brand-new hangars, and we'll have the design for five additional hangars, which will be ready to begin construction as soon as the funding is identified and obtained. And that's certainly going to be something that the county has continued to work hard on, to obtain the funding to build those final five hangars. So by the end, we'll have eight brand-new hangars that can be used by local pilots to store their planes. They can be used by some of our community partners like UTEP. So I'm incredibly proud of all of the investment that the county has made in these past few years and the investment that I know we will continue to make to make the Fabens Airport the best that it can be.
Skateboarding is one of those sports where, you know, you have kids who aren't necessarily into the traditional sports like football and basketball. And this gives them a place to go. It gives them a place to develop a sense of community.
We have Agua Dulce, Estrella, Talliegos. This park in particular, Estrella, it consists of new skate parks, new basketball court, and new playground equipment, which is more of an adventure course.
Initially, it was jam-packed. But as the equipment gets older, less people were showing up. But now with this new equipment and the new build, I can almost guarantee you it is going to be jam-packed.
So we already have a skate park here in Agua Dulce, and we have a basketball court. But they haven't been renovated for many years. So we're going to completely renovate him and create a new skate park, a brand-new skate park.
And this is going to be a much better design. It's going to have a lot more exciting features to it. I think it's something that the community will appreciate. But it will be made of concrete, so we expect it to last longer than I'm going to be around.
You know, I know that the youth of our community, and not just from the outline areas of the county, but inside the city of Passo, are going to come out and enjoy this place. And I know it's really going to be a hit with all the young people in the community. So I'm really proud of that.
Held two public input sessions where skaters told the designer what they wanted to see in the skate park. It's got all the technical street stuff. It's good for beginners, for intermediates, for advanced. I think there's a five-stair. So if you really want to challenge yourself, you can gap down from the five-stair. Or if you're old and you just want to cruise around, or if you're young and you just want to learn, you can flow around the whole park.
And just like always, this court has been very frugal with tax money. And this in conjunction with other grants is paid for by grant money, grant funding that's coming to El Paso.
This project was possible by a grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife. The grant is a total of $2.8 million, which would be distributed between all the parks.
So parks have been a priority for the county for many, many years. We understand how important parks are to our communities.
Our citizens, our constituents deserve no better than, you know, a beautiful place for their kids can come out and enjoy.
I just want to thank everyone who stepped up to the plate to make this happen. It's going to be an awesome facility, and I can't wait to roll around with the locals when it's done.
What's more essential than water and wastewater service for the community? And these communities have lived without this, you know, essential service for, you know, four decades, five decades probably, and many other communities here as well. Thankfully, the county is working on other projects in this community as well as the Lower Valley to make sure that we bring these essential services to the community. This is going to be the start of the first-time water and wastewater project for several communities here in the Cano Tio area. We are very, very proud. We're very fortunate, actually, that this has really come to fruition. There was funds dedicated for these projects, but the bids came in higher than we expected. And thankfully, with help of the community who came and advocated in front of Commissioner's Court to make sure that we dedicated additional funds so we could get this project, you know, going and started. Otherwise, if the court hadn't dedicated this extra money, we wouldn't be here, and this may not have happened. We're very, very proud of the way that the community came together, advocate, to get the additional funds for this project. And it's just a blessing. And we want to thank everybody that had helped in this, getting this event done.
This community doesn't currently have a park.
Well, this is a linear park for square dance, something we've been working on for, you know, a little over 12 years.
We incorporated an area for them to do, you know, activities, walk, and like I said, also a place to gather. So this project will take approximately 150 days. It consists of a linear trail that starts on Montana, ends on Frankie Lane. And it's a 10-foot-wide trail. So it will be a very interactive trail throughout. It will also have native landscaping, and we've also incorporated drainage.
I think it's going to add, it's going to look beautiful. They're going to, well, the trail for us to walk is going to be safer for us, an area designated for walking, you know, with your family. So I think it's going to be something, you know, a great improvement to our community.
Why should people that live in the city have more access to the benefits, quality of life?
I've been here since I was three years old. I'm 40. So I've seen the whole thing, you know. So the whole improvement that has been in our community has been really great.
From street paving to the park, to the lights, to everything you see out here, I am so grateful to the court because I'm only one vote of five that can make things like this happen. Today, we have lights on the lake, and it's jam-packed outside. People are having a good time. And really, this is what El Paso deserves. People are excited about the season. They're excited about their lake. They're excited about the lights. So this is a really good night for families to bond and to have a good time.
So everyone was so excited. One, when all of the lights came on, the beautiful Christmas tree was lit. But then also when they saw our special guest, which was Santa. So now we have a long line of kids waiting to tell Santa what they want for Christmas this year. And that's, of course, what we want. We want children to be able to come, to be happy, to see Santa, get their photo with him, get to see all of the beautiful lights. We want this to be a special time and a special place for our families here in El Paso.
We have 70 different light displays. We have a variety. There's interactive lights as you drive through. A lot of our lights are on display, are sound activated. So as we approach them, they come on. We do have a drive-through along Escarate Lake, so you can stay in your car. You can see the displays. I just hope folks come out, enjoy it. I think it's a good time. I think it's very unique. We really want to make this a fun time for the folks throughout El Paso County.
Oh, I think like everybody should come and check it out. It's pretty, pretty nice out here. My husband saw it on like social media, so we decided to check it out. And we liked it. And we love the lights, a little setup for the pictures and it's pretty, pretty nice.
El Paso's a beautiful place, got some beautiful music, beautiful lights, incredible people. We're the best community in the country and the best region. So wishing all of you a Merry Christmas and an amazing, amazing 2025.
So today we're celebrating that there will be three neighborhoods who are now going to get access to wastewater, which is basically being able to connect to the Lower Valley Water District's sewer system.
Wow, it's emotional, you know, we're feeling so happy for our community, especially for the families that we have in the, in the county.
We know that the septic systems that people use are more than 30 years old and they're causing contamination issues, which are a primary issue for people's well-being and health.
Yeah, it's, it's, we'll be living with a septic tank, it can be a problem for environmental communities. And now that we're working together with the Lower Valley and the county and getting some fundings for get this project, so we're so happy with that.
It's already started, alright, and it's going to take somewhere around six to eight months.
So at the County of El Paso, we decided to prioritize these types of projects to be able to connect these communities to water and wastewater services. We invested about $40 million of our American Rescue Plan Act dollars that we received from the federal government in 2022. We invested those funds to be able to partner with the Lower Valley Water District to be able to connect these neighborhoods.
It would have taken us another 15 years to come up with the money to be able to do this. So we're very grateful to the county for having sponsored us through this project.
Well, it's groundbreaking for three new hangars. And this is something that we, we started talking about back in 2013. So it's been a long ways to get here. A lot of people say, well, this airport's like an overnight success. Well, maybe, but it took 55 years to get to this day. We're sitting on a gold mine, this is a, this is a jam. So as the years go on, you're going to see that this will become a regional airport. We're excited and I know this is a great opportunity for the local residents and for the entire county.
So during the past five years, the county has been successful in obtaining about $20 million worth of federal, state, and local funding to be able to expand services here in Fabens. So with some money from the Economic Development Administration through the Congresswoman's office, we were able to obtain a $5 million grant, which helped fund the design of eight brand-new hangars and then the construction of three of those eight. So by the end of this project, we'll see three brand-new hangars and we'll have the design for five additional hangars, which will be ready to begin construction as soon as the funding is identified and obtained. And that's certainly going to be something that the county has continued to work hard on to obtain the funding to build those final five hangars. So by the end, we'll have eight brand-new hangars that can be used by local pilots to store their planes. They can be used by some of our community partners like UTEP. So I'm incredibly proud of all of the investment that the county has made in these past few years and the investment that I know we will continue to make to make the Fabens Airport the best that it can be.
Skateboarding is one of those sports where, you know, you have kids who aren't necessarily into the traditional sports like football and basketball and, and this gives them a place to go. It gives them a place to develop a sense of community.
We have Agua Dulce, Estrella, Talliegos. This park in particular, Estrella, it consists of new skate parks, a new basketball court, and new playground equipment, which is more of an adventure course.
Initially, it was jam-packed, but as the equipment gets older, less, less people were showing up. But now with this new equipment and the new build, I can almost guarantee you it is going to be jam-packed.
So we already have a skate park here in Agua Dulce and we have a basketball court, but they haven't been renovated for many years. So we're going to completely renovate him and create a new skate park, a brand-new skate park.
And this is going to be a much better design. It's going to have a lot more exciting features to it. I think it's something that the community will appreciate, but it will be made of concrete. So we expect it to last longer than I'm going to be around.
You know, I know that the youth of our community, and not just from the outline areas of the county, but inside the city of Passo, are going to come out and enjoy this place. And I know it's really going to be a hit with all the young people in the community. So I'm really proud of that.
Held two public input sessions where skaters told the designer what they wanted to see in the skate park. It's got all the technical street stuff. It's good for beginners, for intermediates, for advanced. I think there's a five-stair, so if you really want to challenge yourself, you can gap down from the five-stair. Or if you're old and you just want to cruise around, or if you're young and you just want to learn, you can flow around the whole park.
And just like always, this, this court has been very frugal with tax money. And this in conjunction with other grants is paid for by grant money, grant funding that's coming to El Paso.
This project was possible by a grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife. The grant is a total of 2.8 million, which would be distributed between all the parks.
So parks have been a priority for the county for many, many years. We understand how important parks are to our communities.
Our citizens, our, you know, our constituents deserve no better than, you know, a beautiful place for their kids can come out and enjoy.
I just want to thank everyone who stepped up to the plate to make this happen. It's going to be an awesome facility and I can't wait to roll around with the locals when it's done.
What's more essential than water and wastewater service for the community? And these communities have lived without this, you know, essential service for, you know, four decades, five decades probably, and many other communities here as well. We are thankfully, the county is working on other projects in this community as well as the Lower Valley to make sure that we bring these essential services to the community. This is going to be the start of the first-time water and wastewater project for several communities here in the Cano Teo area. We are very, very proud, we're very fortunate actually, that this has really come to a fruition. There was funds dedicated for these projects, but the bids came in higher than we expected. And thankfully, with help of the community who came and advocated in front of Commissioner's Court to make sure that we dedicate an additional fund so we could get this project, you know, going and started. Otherwise, if the court hadn't dedicated this extra money, we wouldn't be here and this may not have happened. We're very, very proud of the way that the community came together, advocate, to get the additional funds for this project and it's just a blessing. And we want to thank everybody that had helped in this, getting this event done.
This community doesn't currently have a park.
Well, this is a linear park for square dance, something we've been working on for, for, you know, a little over 12 years.
We incorporated an area for them to do, you know, activities, walk, and like I said, also a place to, to gather. So this project will take approximately 150 days. It consists of a linear trail that starts on Montana, ends on Frankie Lane. And it's a 10-foot wide trail, so it will be a very interactive trail throughout. It will also have native landscaping and we've also incorporated drainage.
I think it's going to add, it's going to look beautiful. They're going to, well, the trail for us to walk is going to be safer for us. An area designated for walking, you know, with your family. So I think it's going to be something, you know, a great improvement to our community.
Why should people that live in the city have more access to, to the benefits, quality of life?
I've been here since I'm, since I was three years old. I'm 40, so I've seen the whole thing, you know. So the whole improvement that has been in our community has been really great.
From street paving to the park, to the lights, to everything you see out here, I am so grateful to the court because I'm only one vote of five that make, can make things like this happen. Today we have lights on the lake and it's jam-packed outside. People are having a good time and really this is what El Paso deserves. People are excited about the season, they're excited about their lake, they're excited about the light. So this is a really good night for families to bond and to have a good time.
So everyone was so excited. One, when all of the lights came on, the beautiful Christmas tree was lit. But then also when they saw our special guest, which was Santa. So now we have a long line of kids waiting to tell Santa what they want for Christmas this year. And that's of course what we want. We want children to be able to come, to be happy, to see Santa, get their photo with him, get to see all of the beautiful lights. We want this to be a special time and a special place for our families here in El Paso.
We have 70 different light displays. We have a variety, there's interactive lights as you drive through. Lot of our lights are on display, are sound activated, so as we approach them, they come on. We do have a drive-through along Escarate Lake, so you can stay in your car, you can see the displays. I just hope folks come out, enjoy it. I think it's a good time, I think it's very unique. We really want to make this a fun time for the folks throughout El Paso County.
Oh, I think like everybody should come and check it out. It's pretty, pretty nice out here. My husband saw it on like social media, so we decided to check it out. And we love the lights, a little setup for the pictures and it's pretty, pretty nice.
El Paso's a beautiful place, got some beautiful music, beautiful lights, incredible people. We're the best community in the country and the best region. So wishing all of you a Merry Christmas and an amazing, amazing 2025.
So today, we're celebrating that there will be three neighborhoods who are now going to get access to wastewater, which is basically being able to connect to the Lower Valley Water District's sewer system.
Wow, it's emotional. We're feeling so happy for our community, especially for the families that we have in the county.
We know that the septic systems that people use are more than 30 years old, and they're causing contamination issues, which are a primary issue for people's well-being and health.
Yeah, so we'll be living with a septic tank. That can be a problem for environmental communities. And now that we're working together with the Lower Valley and the county and getting some fundings for get this project, so we're so happy with that.
It's already started, and it's going to take somewhere around six to eight months.
So at the County of El Paso, we decided to prioritize these types of projects, to be able to connect these communities to water and wastewater services. We invested about $40 million of our American Rescue Plan Act dollars that we received from the federal government in 2022. We invested those funds to be able to partner with the Lower Valley Water District to be able to connect these neighborhoods.
It would have taken us another 15 years to come up with the money to be able to do this. So we're very grateful to the county for having sponsored us through this project.
Well, it's groundbreaking for three new hangars. And this is something that we started talking about back in 2013. So it's been a long ways to get here. A lot of people say, "Well, this airport's like an overnight success." Well, maybe, but it took 55 years to get to this day. We're sitting on a gold mine. This is a jam. So as the years go on, you're going to see that this will become a regional airport. We're excited, and I know this is a great opportunity for the local residents and for the entire county.
So during the past five years, the county has been successful in obtaining about $20 million worth of federal, state, and local funding to be able to expand services here in FABENS. So with some money from the Economic Development Administration through the Congresswoman's office, we were able to obtain a $5 million grant, which helped fund the design of eight brand-new hangars, and then the construction of three of those eight. So by the end of this project, we'll see three brand-new hangars, and we'll have the design for five additional hangars, which will be ready to begin construction as soon as the funding is identified and obtained. And that's certainly going to be something that the county has continued to work hard on, to obtain the funding to build those final five hangars. So by the end, we'll have eight brand-new hangars that can be used by local pilots to store their planes. They can be used by some of our community partners, like UTEP. So I'm incredibly proud of all of the investment that the county has made in these past few years, and the investment that I know we will continue to make to make the FABENS Airport the best that it can be.
Skateboarding is one of those sports where you have kids who aren't necessarily into the traditional sports like football and basketball, and this gives them a place to go. It gives them a place to develop a sense of community.
We have Aguadulce, Estrella, Talliegos. This park in particular, Estrella, it consists of new skate parks, a new basketball court, and new playground equipment, which is more of an adventure course.
Initially, it was jam-packed, but as the equipment gets older, less people were showing up. But now with this new equipment and the new build, I can almost guarantee you it is going to be jam-packed.
So we already have a skate park here in Aguadulce, and we have a basketball court, but they haven't been renovated for many years. So we're going to completely renovate them and create a new skate park, a brand-new skate park.
And this is going to be a much better design. It's going to have a lot more exciting features to it. I think it's something that the community will appreciate. But it will be made of concrete, so we expect it to last longer than I'm going to be around.
You know, I know that the youth of our community, and not just from the...
Commissioner's Court has reconvened to special open session. We are on Item 4A. Receive a presentation and discuss items regarding the development, implementation, and oversight of the FY 2024 Multi-Year Capital Plan for El Paso County, including project selections, performance objectives and outcomes, performance management, operational management, corresponding financial planning related to capital investments and operational needs, and general capital direction related to the 2024 Capital Improvement Bond and other future public finance instruments and opportunities. And I believe we'll go ahead and begin with the public comment we have remaining. First speaker, I'm not sure if she's here. Okay, Mr. Michael Gagliol.
Welcome, Michael.
Good morning, Judge Samaniego. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you once again for allowing me to come and address the court to talk about green stormwater infrastructure. You guys have heard me up here before. Just a quick refresher. Green stormwater infrastructure refers to stormwater facilities that use water runoff, stormwater runoff, to irrigate green spaces within the public realm. It's my opinion that every landscaped space within the public realm is an opportunity for green infrastructure and stormwater management, kind of decentralizing stormwater management, if you will. We're talking about the bond issue and how we're going to spend money on capital improvements and things. And so I just wanted to quickly point out that green infrastructure is an avenue that really doesn't require additional funding or more money. It just requires kind of changing the way we design things and changing the way we implement things just a little bit. We're going to build sidewalks and landscaped spaces anyway. We might as well make them green stormwater infrastructure. One of the things that everybody in this room can get behind is planting more trees. Everybody knows the benefits of trees. We talk about the heat island effect happening in big cities, and how as concrete and asphalt and unscathed spaces increases, so does the heat island. Well, green stormwater infrastructure can solve both the lack of trees and the heat island effect at the same time. We take stormwater runoff from rain events in El Paso. We take it off the street. We irrigate plants in our public right-of-ways with those, and we use native plants to grow shade, and it cools the streets, increases property values, and does all these wonderful things. I can get way into the technical weeds on it, but I won't. The other thing is the educational opportunities that this industry brings with it. Green stormwater infrastructure is definitely an interdisciplinary aspect, and it applies at all levels of the construction industry, from the owners and the architects to the landscapers that are doing the work. Knowledge about green infrastructure and the benefits of it, and how to properly implement it, is important. And so there are educational opportunities that could be implemented, trainings at the community college level and in the university level, and even opportunities at the high school level. For example, I can think of some areas where we could bring in high school students to learn about these kinds of activities in their own school campus and take that job skill with them as they go on. So without taking up too much more time, I just wanted to say that as you consider the capital improvements projects, at the baseline of it all, consider implementing green stormwater infrastructure. It's not that hard, and we can help. Okay, thank you so much once again.
Michael, for your time. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker, we have Mr. Michael Bray.
Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. For a change, I'm not going to be here speaking about real estate. My name is Michael Bray, and I'm the chairman of the Regional Renewable Energy Advisory Council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today here. With your recent approval of the $323 million capital improvement bond, we have a unique opportunity to position El Paso County as a leader in sustainable development. By incorporating alternative renewable energy sources, such as green hydrogen, solar, and geothermal, we can achieve long-term cost savings, energy independence, and environmental benefits for our community. Why should we be looking at renewable energy? Well, long-term cost savings, first of all. Solar and geothermal energy significantly reduce utility costs over time, minimizing your budgetary pressures on the county operations. From a security standpoint, geothermal and green hydrogen provide reliable on-demand power, reducing reliance on external energy markets and price volatility, which we're seeing in the news right now. Environmental responsibility, a commitment to renewables, obviously aligns with the national sustainability efforts, reducing carbon emissions, preserving natural resources. Recently, with the REACT, the Regional Renewable Advisory Council, we had a conference here last October, taking a look at geothermal energy for the particular region. We found a lot of great things that came out of that. We had participants from all over the country. We had from Houston, Dallas, Idaho. We had EPA there, Fort Bliss was there, UTEP College of Mines Engineering, and the professors were also there at that meeting. Some of the key points we found out is that geothermal energy is a versatile and cost-effective renewable source, and it has bipartisan support. Advances in drilling technology have made geothermal energy more efficient and economically viable. El Paso has a strong potential for geothermal cooling, which could be integrated with solar for a reliable, non-polluting energy source. The Permian Energy Development Lab is actively developing workforce programs to support geothermal projects here. Real Grand Electric Co-op, which is the service provider for electricity at Fort Bliss, they manage their energy requirements. They're expanding their renewable portfolio, and they're collaborating here with El Paso Electric. Geothermal energy storage is comparable to pumped hydro in efficiency and capacity. That's one thing we have problems with solar, that during the day it works great, but what do you do at night? How do you store it? Lithium batteries, perhaps, or we can use geothermal for that. While water access remains a challenge, geothermal small footprint, which can be as small as 20 to 30 acres in scalability, make it a valuable investment. The Texas Army National Guard facility on Hondo Pass a few years ago successfully retrofitted its facility with geothermal systems for greater efficiency and resilience. So we actually have demonstratable success stories right here in El Paso. By working with the Renewable Energy Advisory Council, the REACT, we can leverage our expertise and funding opportunities to integrate renewable solutions into county projects. Collaboration ensures optimal planning, grant access, and technical guidance for sustainable infrastructure development. We urge the commissioners to commit to integrating alternative renewable energy in upcoming projects here. This strategic investment will benefit our economy, our environment, and future generations. Thank you for your time and leadership in building a more resilient El Paso County.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time. Appreciate it.
Next speaker, we have Ms. Nicole Gonzalez.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for having me speak today. I appreciate it. My name is Nicole Gonzalez. I am the executive director of Kaleidoscope Art Market. We are currently working with the Coliseum for the events that we do. I just want to speak about the possibility of investing in the Coliseum. We've been there for a little bit, over a year now, and we have definitely grown substantially, not just with our events itself, but the community coming out to the Coliseum specifically. The Coliseum is in the heart of a really big community in El Paso, a very old community right now. And we've noticed, we have the markets that a lot of the community comes out and supports. So I believe it would be beneficial to not just our markets, but the community as well, to be able to invest in the Coliseum, to be able to have a bigger venue and be able to do different events there, not just the markets that we're doing, but grander-scale events as well. We do a Sunday market as well. The Sunday market starts in about March, and we've noticed that it's grown substantially since we've been there, and we've gotten nothing but positive feedback from the community as well. So I just wanted to talk on behalf of the Coliseum and hopefully we can get that investment going to helping bigger events at the Coliseum.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker, we have Mr. Omar Ropel.
Good morning, Omar.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, good morning, everybody. Omar Ropel with El Paso Sports Commission. And I want to thank this court for continuing, trying to push the opportunity to invest in the grounds of the Coliseum. Thank you for doing that. I think we have proven in the years that with what we have, we have brought several major events and a lot of entertainment for this community, that they deserve it. And they said there's nothing to do in El Paso. We have proved them wrong. There's a lot of things that we have done. We have worked with a lot of... We have worked with a lot of organizations like Kaleidoscope, Warrior's Edge, El Paso Youth Hockey, the Rhinos. There's a lot of stakeholders that would support all the efforts that we do, and we also work with law enforcement, you name it, El Paso Sheriff's, El Paso Police Department, ICE, Homeland Security, and a lot of, everybody pretty much makes use of the Coliseum, and this is only with the facilities that we have. Imagine if we actually invest, do some renovations, do some repairs, build new venues, we would be the Mecca of the entertainment. That would be the entertainment district in the heart of El Paso. So I would like to thank you for helping us and for continuing trying to make this investment into this property that is well-needed and well-deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Omar. Appreciate your time.
Next, we have Ms. Elizabeth Walsh.
Thank you all for your time.
I'm not sure if she's on Teams.
She was on earlier, but she's no longer on.
I believe that's all we have at the moment. We have three to read in, but can we come back to those if you don't mind?
Thank you again, Judge Commissioners. The comments team can pull up the presentation. Here's, again, the overview that I presented at the beginning of the meeting. I've had a chance to meet with McCall on some of the coordination that's been underway over the last several weeks. Now turn it over to Mr. Brad Engs with Steefel, who will be providing the court with a refresher on some finance scenarios that were previously presented. I would preface this presentation by also letting the court know that following the conversation that the court had on Monday regarding the grant match for the Build Grant that was presented by the Planning Department, and also some recent conversations that we've had with planning regarding other pending grant submissions to the Texas Water Development Board for the Flood Infrastructure Fund, we did ask Steefel to develop another funding scenario for your consideration because those two grant programs involve substantial matches and possibility of low-to-zero-interest loans from different agencies, and so we wanted the court to have information on what those scenarios could look like. And so it took a little bit of time to develop that. It was sent over yesterday evening. We've uploaded it to the backup this morning. It'll be presented to you for your consideration, but again, we're not asking the court to take any action on any of these items today. This is simply intended to make sure that you have all the pertinent information that we'll need as we start to move forward in decision-making over the next month. So with that, I will turn over to Mr. Engs.
Thank you, Jose. Brad, thank you.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners and staff. Good to be with you this morning. Brad Engs with Steefel Public Finance serves as your financial advisor in developing financing plans for capital improvement projects. Get queued up here with my presentation as Mr. Londeros prefaced and provided an introduction for. We're here to provide you some guidelines on the financing capacity and bonding capacity that you have available to you based on your Five Cent Essential Purpose Project Fund that you've been had in place now for, I believe this is the sixth year running, as well as some timelines and some looks at the general obligation bond that voters approved here this past fall and what we anticipate for moving forward with some of that financing. Looking here on Slide 4, I want to direct you to the top-left table. This looks at your historical assessed valuation. That's the value of all the property within the county. And then in that middle column titled INS, that stands for interest in sinking, that is your debt service tax rate. You can see we look to structure that at five cents each year. That's been true going back to 2020. That's our target for you. As those valuations come in, sometimes the final valuations are slightly different than the numbers we were working with when we set that tax rate, and so that's why you see a little bit of a fluctuation, plus or minus a small percentage of that five cent rate. Moving ahead, this is a look at the county's current debt portfolio. We monitor this, and we structure it in a way that's set up so that the county can in any one year look to layer on additional projects and capital improvements. The sum of all these debt obligations and payments comes to a payment schedule that looks like this slide that we have here in front of you. Each year, looking at the left-hand side of that bar chart, 24 and 25, those are structured in a way to be able to be paid with that Five Central Purpose Project Fund. And so each year, we look to provide you capacity within your capital improvement plan, all the while keeping that tax rate steady. You can see in 2026, there is a step down in your debt service, and then moving forward, it's a declining debt service structure. Again, that's meant to provide capacity opportunity for the court and staff to take on additional projects from the plan as you move forward.
I'm sorry, before you move on from that slide.
Yes, ma'am.
So there's a little orange box. It says GO 2023, which, can you remind me which issuance that was? Because it says GO.
It gets, so GO can be categorized, if you do a bond refunding of previous issued debt that's backed with property tax, for instance, a certificate of obligation, if you refund that type of debt, it gets categorized as a GO in the future. So I believe that's a refunding.
So this is a prior CO probably that was refunded in 2023.
That was a 2012 CO that we refunded in 2013 to change it to taxable. If you all recall, we were working through some of the findings of our capital fund expenditures, and we needed to bring that into the taxable side, and so we were able to do that, still out of savings through the refunding because of the market condition change.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
As I was mentioning, the declining debt service structure, debt portfolio structure, again, it's designed to allow for the court and staff to take on future capital improvement projects. Looking at the debt portfolio as it stands, we've also and continue to monitor for refunding opportunities, refinancing opportunities, like we just spoke about, in order to save on the debt service payments on an annual basis. There are a few bonds that we're monitoring here, represented on this page, and that's the 2016 DCOs, the 23A tax notes, 2015 GO refunding, and a 23C tax note. Currently, we see minimal savings, about 1.81%. We like to see 3% or greater before we actually pursue these. The other way that can provide a boost to the savings is if you pair this with a new money issuance. So if you all are going out this spring with bonds for the GO or potentially for other projects in the Essential Purpose Project Fund, the Five Cent Fund, you could pair this with it to cut down the transactional cost, which can help with savings. So we'll continue to monitor this and provide updates as we move forward.
Excuse me.
Jose alluded to this, and we continue to keep an eye on this. There's several applications out with the Water Development Board right now that the county has submitted. Their application process can sometimes take as much as a year, and so we want to be mindful if the county is awarded for any of these projects, and if the county accepts those award.
Excuse me.
Awards, we may need to factor these into your future plan of finance and how that impacts your Five Cent Project Fund, or if that were to be added on top of that with additional tax impact, tax rate impact.
And I'm sorry, Jose, do we have any idea when we might be hearing about these, the Water Development Board applications?
The Planning Department indicated sometime in the spring, and years prior, we've been notified by about March or April, following the annual water conference, and the Water Development Board just wrapped up that conference this week, actually. So we should be hearing something in the next several months, and then we expect to hear back on the Build Grant as Mr. McElroy presented on Monday by June of this year.
Typically, after a award, you have approximately a year to finish or close on those type of financings, so we've tentatively penciled in if these were to be pursued, that they would be done in the spring of '26 on your next year's capital financing cycle.
Question, Joseb. Traditionally, when we've applied for these water development grants from the Water Board, do we have an estimate of how much of our applications have been granted, just on a, you know, percentage-wise, of how much money we've applied for in the past, do we actually get granted?
I know during the previous funding cycle, we received notice on one application, and then after the first round of funding, various organizations did not accept funding, and we ended up having all four projects funded. The exact amount escapes me. I don't know, Ms. Bolosius.
It's about 44 million, if I remember correctly.
That's correct, yeah.
Forty-four million total in the grants? And how much that was our match?
So there was, there was a combination of loan and grant. I think we probably had approximately, I'd have to check, but I believe it was somewhere between 30 to $35 million in CO loans, zero-interest loans that we pursued. In this next round, it's larger than that. Projects have gotten more expensive, but, and then the Water Development Board prioritizes every single project ahead of the submission, so entities can know whether or not they have a good chance. The largest project that we have teed up for funding in this latest cycle is also the project that ranked the highest, and it is a approximately $58, $59 million project on the West Side to benefit Cano deal, Westway, and Vinton, some of the areas that were hardest hit in 2006. And so the grant is maxed out at $18 million for the funding, for the program funding rules, and so we'd be looking at an estimated $41 million zero-interest loan over 30 years. And so in terms of contingency scenario planning, that is the amount that you'll see Mr. Engs present at the end of his presentation. It's a $41 million loan. If the court were to receive multiple awards, the court could decide how to proceed with either multiple Water Development Board loans. If we don't receive funding for that one because of the dollar amount, and we see funding for others, we'll have to work on adjusting those numbers, but we have done a worst-case scenario with a single project, the largest project, for your review and consideration this morning.
Thanks. And Brad, just to the public can be aware, if we receive these zero-interest grant, that saves us quite substantially over the term of the bond, does it not, for the public to know?
Significantly, yes, sir. Both the grant portion is money that you don't have to repay, and then getting the zero-interest loan can save millions in interest cost over the life of the repayment.
Somewhere around approximately half of what additional cost if we were to finance it actually, of the actual amount of the bonds over 25 years, say?
I'd have to run those numbers, but it's.
Substantial.
Substantially, yeah.
And during the last funding cycle, $24.9 million in loans and about $16.3 million in grants over four projects. And the first project was awarded the summer of '21, and the last project awarded March of '23. So the reason why it spread out over that period of time is, again, because other agencies that were awarded perhaps did not pursue the funding after all, and so because they didn't pursue the funding, they just go to the next available project. I think it came as a surprise to most of the leadership in Austin that a little desert county like El Paso was such, was the single largest recipient of the first cycle of funding through the FIF.
Thank you.
Moving ahead, again, for the benefit of the public and the court, the Five Cent Essential Purpose Project Fund that you all set up here over the last six years is designed to perpetually provide funding options for the county's capital facility needs every two to three years at minimum. That five cent INS rate, or the debt service rate, is structured to provide for these ongoing projects, the essential purpose projects such as stormwater needs, public safety, and roadways. Underneath that five cent, the legislature in the state of Texas authorizes this court to finance with several different financing tools. That includes tax anticipation notes, certificates of obligation, or general obligation bonds. It just, the projects just need to be within the definition of public works, and that is statutorily defined. And so every time the court considers that, we make sure that you fall within the confines of the legal framework, working with your bond counsel, of course. This next bullet point, the current capacity for that five cent INS rate or your Essential Purpose Project Fund is about $135 to $175 million. We've revised that, as Mr. Londeros mentioned. It's up to about $200 million on the high end, and that's for a couple of different considerations. The assessors department and CAD appraisal district came back to the county in October and revised your valuation upwards of about $2 billion. And then the second factor is if you take on Water Development Board loans, those are at a 0% financing rate, and you can repay them over 30 years. So it really limits the amount of impact to your annual capacity and provides for more projects that you could do today. Thereafter, I mentioned what's available to you here over the next year to three years. We really work hard to make sure there's kind of a recurring availability for this court or future courts, and right now, we estimate every couple of years after that to be at least $70 million of additional capacity. So this is our baseline scenario, trying to identify what that capacity is here over the next few years and beyond. I've presented this to you all before, but to reorient you with the results, up top, you'll see that we've highlighted in orange here for 2025 approximately $75 million of projects which can be done through certificates of obligation. That number, as we just mentioned, could go as high as 100, depending on if Water Development Board-type loans and interest rates cooperate. In 2028, we estimate 100 million of additional capacity, and then after that, moving beyond three years, 2030, 2032, we see about $70 million of recurring capacity for the court, and that moves beyond every couple of years. The chart on the bottom, the dark blue represents your current debt portfolio payments. The green, blue, orange, and yellow represent how we would layer on the payments for potential additional projects equating to these amounts in the top table.
Question, Brad.
Yes, sir.
Just so the public's clear on this, this projected funding does not take into account what we have not gone out to CO for, we haven't done a call for a CO, so if we did a call for a CO, that would be, this amount would be less, right?
That is correct.
I mean, we have a list of CO projects that we have been discussing over the last year. We haven't gone out to bond for those yet. When we do go out to bond for those, this amount, that'll cut into this amount.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
As will the potential zero-interest loans from the Texas Water Development Board, right? If we decided we wanted to keep the capacity for, I think it was 66 million total for all the applications, right?
For all the applications. For all the applications, about sixty-six million. We have a, an analysis that we performed that we'll show you here in a few minutes that looks at some of those breakouts, but this is roughly the, the high level of any projects utilizing that five-cent cap. And, and let me go into just a little detail on that. That top dotted line here represents the revenue that would be produced with your five-cent capital project rate, and we've used conservative numbers in the growth of that revenue. Over the last couple of years, the, the county's assessed valuation has actually grown north, northwards of, of, of ten percent. I believe this past year it was twelve percent, fourteen percent before. We're using a two-and-a-half percent growth rate on the first couple of years, that drops to two percent for three years after that, and then down to half, point five percent beyond five years. So, working with staff, we've been very conservative about that. So if you grow more than that, you'll see this line in your five-cent actually produce additional revenues.
And, and we'll, we'll probably get into this a little bit later in the, in the, the presentation, but the original amount of COs that we had talked about funding was about a hundred and fifty million dollars, correct?
It had shifted. So your, your maximum capacity, the, when we started this exercise last year, five hundred million, the, what we put onto the bond on the ballot was three twenty-five, and so the difference shifted to one seventy-five. But there were some variations throughout the years we went through the process, and we ultimately did start at one, it was one fifty, three fifty, then we went to three twenty-five, one seventy-five, and that's where we left off. So at this point, we are at, we're still roughly at one seventy-five. That could increase slightly based on some of the factors that Mr. Engs just described.
But that's the capacity that we have, or you're talking about, or that's the amount that we, of the COs that we, the project list that we came up with that we want to fund?
Oh, so the project list that we have is one seventy-five.
Okay.
Right? But, but what's not included in that list are these additional projects, like the Water Development Board and the potential CIB loan grant, if we do receive that build grant from the federal government.
And, and, and also the fact that there's about close to fifty million dollars worth of projects that we cannot fund because of the, because of the bond, because of the GO bond.
Yes, and so that list is a three-year list, and so it's, it was intended to be spread across two issuances in 2025 and 2028. And so the forty-nine million that's pending in courthouse improvements that you cannot issue debt for this year, based on the existing laws and rules that are in place, the county can still issue debt for that in 2028. So it still remains an active part of your list. It's just not something that we can discuss financing at this point because of the results of the election.
Because of the moratorium on the GO bond.
That's correct.
Just want to make.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so moving forward, again, this is the high mark of your capacity under the five cent. So staff asked us to look at some more detailed examples of, of some potential scenarios under that, and so this one looks at just using a tax note this year until 2028. And so this retains the ability in 2028 to do a hundred million, but we wanted to look at, well, what's the max you could do in a tax note this year, using that five-cent cap over the next few years? And the result was thirty-five million. And so that amount is quite a bit less because you repay a tax note over seven years, seven year maximum, and so you're fitting all the debt service into just a few years instead of spreading it out over the life of a project, like some other financings may, may be. This comes with some other items that you should consider. If we max out, if we do a tax note at thirty-five this year, that would take up your capacity for next year, and not allow for Water Development Board loans next year, or other type of priorities that may come into your purview and be a priority for this court. Second scenario we wanted to look at was a smaller tax note. This would allow for approximately fifteen million dollars of projects to be financed with tax notes this year, and we wanted to see if you did a smaller amount of tax notes, how much capacity would remain with a certificate of obligation? And so because that CO can be repaid over twenty-five years, we increase your total amount of projects to the fifteen plus thirty-five to be about fifty million in total over the next, over this cycle before you get to twenty-eight. Then, is it possible to switch to that supplemental slide that we prepared and was attached last night by Mr. Londeros?
Yeah, I'll queue it up.
There we go. Thank you. So this was a, another scenario, and again, we can, we can work these a lot of different ways. We're trying to give you the, the guidelines and boundaries, but this puts some priority on retaining capacity for the Water Development Board programs and the SIB programs. I had mentioned earlier, if we got those awards or notice of it, most likely, we would look to do these financings next year, next spring about this, or late winter. And so what we've done is retained forty-one million, you'll see there in the second column, for the Water Development Board programs. This, that equates to the largest project and the highest-ranked project that you're under consideration for. And then about fourteen million for the SIB program, again, that's through Tech dot for road improvements, totaling about fifty-five million. That Water Development Board has a zero percent interest rate. The SIB is, is also a lower-than-market rate, about two-point-seven percent compared to maybe four-and-a-half percent that market rates would require. And what we found is, when we looked back to what kind of capacity could you still do this year, based on those new figures from the assessors office, and what we found is fifty million in COs could be accomplished, could be issued this year under the five-cent rate, while still leaving capacity for the Water Development Board and SIB in the total of fifty, fifty-five million next year. Every one of these scenarios retains that ability to do a hundred million in 2028 and seventy million every two years thereafter, so. So again, you're, I, I hope this is starting to paint the picture for you about the amount of projects that you can do. We see, you know, fifty million up to a hundred million that could be done this year in COs, down to about fifteen to thirty-five million if you pursue a tax note route.
I've got a question on the, on the, the projects that, that have been identified for the TWDB and the CIB. Are those projects that were originally on the list that we went out to the public with, or those are completely separate, like we haven't really vetted those with the public?
No, those were, those were separate projects. Yeah, so the, the stormwater projects, the flood control projects that are on the list that went out to the public are the projects that we traditionally funded in-house. Those are projects that are not as competitive for grant funding because they have limited benefit-cost ratios, which is a big component of receiving access to federal funds or state funds. And so those have been administered by Mr. Adnan, this is infrastructure services over the last years, and they, they include, you know, installing culverts where the road washes out, those, and they're, you know, they're one-to-four million dollar projects in a lot of instances that are areas that provide threats to access and also maintenance issues for, for the infrastructure department. These projects are larger in scale, and they serve multiple areas, and these are currently administered in conjunction with the engineering staff and public works by Mr. Munzer Al-Siraj and the Planning Department.
And they were identified in the stormwater master plan that this court adopted, and this court also agreed to submit those grant applications.
Yes, ma'am, yeah. So all of them, there's, there's like, that, all of the projects are included in that flood, in that master plan, and there's an economy of the ones that are competitive for grants, and then there's the ones that are not. And so that's the, the reason why we see this.
So the ones that are not are the ones that were put on the seat to, to consider for the CO and GO?
That's correct, yeah. But you see that, if you recall in a few, few previous slides, we had a CO series that was issued in, in March of 2023. That is, we issued general certificates of obligation in January of 2023, and then in March of 2023, we issued COs, but it was for a low-interest loan for the flood infrastructure fund as well. And so the, those COs are part of the state grant program, and so they've, we're working on marrying them into the financial planning process here, and that's the reason why you see this scenario, so that you have a all-encompassing vision of what exactly is required and how we can keep our, our essential public purpose fund at five cents to include all aspects of stormwater, including those that involve state participation in grant programs.
Brad, why did we only include the one project? I understand that that's the one that's ranked the highest, but I feel like we should maybe include a little bit more of a cushion in case more of the grants are approved. Maybe we won't have the luck that we had last time where all of our applications were approved, but maybe more than one will be approved. So would it be possible, for example, maybe not the full sixty million, but maybe go up to fifty million and reduce the CO accordingly? Would that also work out? Would that math work out?
Yes, it's, it's not dollar-for-dollar. That Water Development Board program is, is zero percent interest, so we can certainly look at those scenarios and, and provide, and work with staff to provide those to you. I think we identified that one, working with staff, because of the rankings. I think looking at last cycle, all of your projects were ranked, I believe, in the top, top hundred. And so just, just trying to forecast where we think the success might be or where awards might come. So we can certainly look at additional options.
And we also have some time, depending when the award comes in, till next year, gives us a little more capacity to add on, is that correct?
That's true, yes, sir.
Okay.
If we could, if you wouldn't mind sending us back to the primary presentation, thank you. Okay, so that's, that's a look at the, the five-cent portfolio. I'm going to move now to the GO bond items.
Brad, apologize, Judge, may I? Before you continue, you know, with respect to the, the, you know, to do this five-cent INS rate, there's, just, just to the public know, there's a pending bill in the legislature that would limit us on what we can do with those certificates of obligation, such as the public safety facilities, is that right?
There, that is true. There are some bills that are proposed to, to limit the type of projects. I, I mentioned the, the statutory authority and the legislative authority that you have at this point. As we've seen with the last several sessions, there are some thoughts and, and bills that are, that would constrain that even more.
Yeah, so the, the, just so the public knows, that if this, if some of these bills go through, it could limit the court from being able to fund some of these projects, such as, my understanding from the bill, public safety facilities, judicial facilities, administrative office buildings, animal shelter, libraries? Isn't that correct, if it goes through?
I, I have not been able to evaluate the, the bill in depth, but those are some items that are currently available for you and mandated to, for the county to perform those duties.
It would severely restrict us if that goes through.
That, that is my understanding.
From what we are considering, some of those issues now.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Moving ahead, if there's no further discussion at this moment, we are starting to prepare for the county's first tranche or issuance of GO bonds in accordance with voter authorization provided in November. Working with staff, we've, we've estimated approximately forty million dollars of projects that are going to go through with this first tranche. Again, these would be structured at that one-and-a-half cent tax rate. That one-and-a-half cent equates to the portion that was authorized in what was the amount that was presented to the public during your process of going to the election, so. That would be done in tandem and perhaps coincide with your schedule for other type of your five-cent projects as well. That would leave the remaining authorization amount to be done in 2027. Again, these would be factored together and wrapped around each other to both, in aggregate, meet that one-point-five cent tax impact that was presented to voters. We have the tax impact of what this amount equates to for the average home value. Looking below the arc, we have the average home value this past year, just over two-hundred thousand dollars for the average home value here in the county. The payment for that hundred-and-fifty-five million of bonds that they approved would be about two dollars and fifty-one cents per month, added to their monthly mortgage statement or property tax escrow payment. The timeline and some upcoming dates, these are what we are moving towards here. We'd like, towards the end of February, for projects that are being considered for the fiscal year '25 financing round to be determined near the end of February. If the court decided to pursue some of these projects to be financed with certificates of obligation, you would consider a notice of intent on March 10th. Again, that lets your residents know that you're considering these amounts. And then in April, we would look to come back to you in late April for final authorization of moving forward with the financings. And at that time, we would have preliminary estimates from the CAD on your new assessed valuation, so that we could structure this to meet those five-cent limitations on the essential purpose project fund, or the one-and-a-half cent limitation on the GO bonds. So we, we do that purposely, so that we get that initial information from the CAD in April, and then in May, we look to lock in your interest rates with investors after a bond sale. Tentatively, looking at a early June, I mentioned pricing, and then late June, closing of the, of the transaction when you get funding for your projects, which will allow us to meet a July 15th deadline with appraisal district for setting your tax rate for the coming year. I believe that's it for today. Happy to answer any additional questions regarding the GO bond or the timeline, or even going back to the five-cent essential purpose fund.
The timeline for the GO bond is different than this timeline that you just shared with us, right, Brad?
It is. It's a, it's a big quicker of a process. Takes one action of the court because your voters have already authorized this. However, we've aligned it with potential for your tax notes or COs, so that we could go to the rating agencies, we could work on the documentation, offering memorandums that go to investors, to do it all in, in one timeline. It provides a little bit of efficiency going that route and some cost savings.
And then if we decided to go back to the voters, that's, that's, that's a more advanced timeline as well?
Went back to the, the voters for a, you know, potentially a mail election. The earliest that would be able to go out would be probably in June, so there is potential opportunity to factor that in. If this court decides to go to an election, we can certainly work on the timeline, and I, I believe we could get that done before the next tax rate was, was established and get that funding and moving those projects forward.
So there's a potential that they could align?
Yes, ma'am.
Before, before the next fiscal year? Okay.
Okay. Brad, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Very much appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Judge Commissars, we'll move back to the overview presentation. Wanted to move now into some legislations we filed, and the court's mentioned a few items. SB 409 that was filed by, and this is a Senate bill. This is the bill that would limit our ability to ask voters to reconsider failed proposition for five years. And so there's no such limitation in law at this point in time. This would be some, some new concept that would be filed. And so what, what the court has discussed about the possibility of seeking voter authorization again would not be allowed if this bill were to move forward. SB 393 limits the county's ability to issue debt for personal property. And so the ability to purchase or lease personal property, if the life of the, of the good is, is less than the repayment term. And so initially, it sounds that that wouldn't be an issue, but there are some instances where the county out of necessities had to lump in because of the cost of bolt purchases. Like in 2012, the sheriff's office fleet was failing. And so the court made the decision to fund vehicle purchases in 2012 as part of the 2012 CO issuance out of necessity. And even though we've moved away from that, because we agree with the concept that we shouldn't be paying for debt for goods that do not last the length of the, of the issuance. But this would bring that into, into law. And, and so that would, that's another item to consider. 1453 by Tepper is a larger bill that does not authorize the county to issue a CO. And it severely limits and amends the definition of what a public work is. And Commissioner Coronel, this is what you were speaking to. It eliminates the ability for the court, for the county to consider public work to be a public safety facility, an emergency facility, judicial facility, an admin building. And then it also requires that certificates be issued only as necessary to pay for obligations that are related to complying with a state or federal law, to mitigate the impact of a public health emergency, to finance the cleanup mitigation and remediation of a natural disaster, or to comply with a court order. And so it's not only limiting the definition of what a public work is, but it's also saying, even with that narrow definition, you can only build these things in the event that you have a specific circumstance that you're looking to address. And so that limits the court's ability to use COs in the way that you have traditionally. The last bill, SB 470, is...
Jose, correct me. I think what you just described was actually the draft amendments under SB 470, not House Bill 1453?
Right. Oh, I'm sorry. So 1453 limits the ability to issue a tax anticipation note if the proposition failed. I apologize, I have my numbers mixed up. Thank you, Ms. Coronel. Yeah. So currently, the county can issue tax anticipation notes for, for any public work. There's no moratorium that applies to tax notes the way it does to COs in the event of a failed proposition. This would close that, and, and tax notes will no longer be eligible for financing things that were disapproved or disallowed by voters in a previous proposition, a previous ballot. So these are just some of the bills that have been filed to date. We expected all of these topics to be on the legislative agenda for the legislature this coming session. It's really just be a question of how these start to move through committee and what that looks like. The House has reduced the number of committees it has from 34 to 30, combining county affairs with, with other governmental affair functions. Where these land and whether that reduced number of committees means that there's more bills per committee, and so there's likelihood of, there's less likelihood of them moving, yet to be seen. So we'll continue to work with our legislative team and our government affairs manager to track these and just provide pertinent updates and relevant updates to the Commissioners' Court as they become available. Going, go back to this kind of overview. Are there any questions on the legislative items before we move on? I'll turn it over now to Ms. Erica Rosales-Negaglioni with the County Attorney's Office. We've worked collaboratively over the last several months since the bond election, since the general election results came forward, and we knew we had to start working on implementing three of the five propositions. And we've created a multi cross-functional team that includes County Attorney's Office, Purchasing, Auditors, Budget, the Executive Team, and Public Works, all in the effort of trying to ensure that we have tangible activities and tasks assigned to help us determine how we can move forward in implementing these projects. And part of that includes evaluating procurement methods and project delivery methods that are relatively new to the county, that we haven't deployed in, in recent years. So Ms. Negaglioni will provide a little bit of an overview on that and answer any questions the court may have on what that progress looks like. We know it's been three months. There's been a lot of behind the scenes work. Some of it has come to the Commissioners' Court, but we have made some substantial progress because of everyone's collaboration and leadership on that, on that team.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Eric Rosales-Negaglioni, Assistant County Attorney. Mr. Landeros stole a lot of my thunder, so sorry if I repeat.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Some of the things, I'm here just as a representative of the team that he described. And so like he said, there's been a lot of behind the scenes work. I'm sorry, Miguel and Alexis, there's, I don't know if, thank you. There's just two slides. And it's just to give you a highlight of the work that the team has done. County Administrator Betsy Keller formed the group that Mr. Landeros highlighted. We have been meeting since prior to the election, since October 1st, meeting biweekly since then, and the goal being sharing information, right, among our, amongst our teams, so that we can improve collaboration. Just some of the work that the group has done, for one, setting up preliminary budget and line items for each bond project. This is so that we can ensure that we can reimburse those expenses once the bond is issued, and we track those expenses from the very beginning. That was with the help of our auditor and her team, from our purchasing department, an analysis of what are the existing cooperative agreements, particularly for things that we can tap into very quickly for these projects, and what are the limitations and the restrictions for the cooperative agreements that are out there? That, that's happened. There's also been a discussion, analysis of the delivery methods beyond the traditional design bid build that the county is accustomed to. So there are other methods that are outlined in Texas procurement law. We know that's not being decided today, but this is just a part of the discussion that we had. Our Public Works team also offered a lot of assistance with analysis of every single project, identifying any kind of special considerations that the team should have so that we could know what we're, we're moving into. In addition to that, the county attorney, Public Works attorneys attended a construction law conference in November, put on by the Texas Construction Law Section, to learn about these alternate delivery methods, because there are very specialized things that you have to do if you do decide to do something that is not traditional, which again, I know you're not deciding today. With the approval of the court, as you all know, we hired a board certified construction lawyer, Tiffany Liel from The Chapman Firm, who's on standby if you have any questions. But she also reviewed the, the projects, the, talked to us about the different delivery methods and like what steps we would need to take, what special contracts we might have to use, so that we're ready for that. So the court knows the next steps as far as legal compliance is, the court has to take formal action for any projects where you want to use a delivery method other than competitive bidding. So we would, of course, bring that back to the court at a later time. Again, that's not being decided today. We're not posted for action today. That's to determine that the method provides the best value for the county. And then, as I mentioned, there's, there are specialized procurement steps, depending on the delivery method that you choose, and also special contracts. We're looking to use the American Institute of Architects contract templates. These are recommended contracts for construction projects. These are widely used, and so we do think that these would help make negotiations faster. These are also contracts that have been litigated, and so we learned a lot about construction law cases that it would be relevant. So we basically get lessons learned from other cities and counties with these contracts. So we think that'll be really useful. The last thing I'll say, I'm only highlighting the construction manager at risk, not because it's necessarily, of course, going to be used for all or any of the projects necessarily, but just because the court had expressed interest in learning more about this method, and it is a delivery method that the team had looked into. So as an overview, the construction manager at risk is essentially a general contractor who provides additional services early, earlier in the project. So the potential to save time and money is because the architect designs the project with the CMAR, that's the acronym for it, input. And so that's a possibility where you could potentially save time and money. They're really in on the projects from very, very early on, right, pre-construction. It does, as I mentioned, require a finding for them, from the court eventually, that it would be the best value for a certain type of project if you so choose. And then it requires statutorily mandated procurement processes, publication with notice, et cetera. The average cost of a CMAR work is anywhere between 3% to 10% of the construction cost of the project. That's not including the soft cost like design. That's just a highlight, again, and just to emphasize, the court can use traditional delivery methods for every project if it so wishes, but if you want to try an alternate delivery method, we've also researched that. So I'll turn it back over to Mr. Landeros, unless there are any questions. Thank you.
So the, as we kind of move forward through our overview, the next portion of the presentation is really to allow the court to have a discussion on, on the existing public purpose project listing, which again, this, this public, this essential public purpose fund is that five cent debt managed portfolio that does not raise taxes. It's part of the strategy that, as Mr. Angst described, has been in place for the past six years, where we've issued debt as we have an opportunity to retire debt. Here's a, you know, an estimate of what those scenarios that Mr. Angst presented look like. Note that the first scenario might be a little bit less, because the Water Development Board loan and the FIF and the CIB loan are, the columns are reversed. It should be a $41 million FIF loan and a $14 million CIB loan. But you can see here that you have one option of doing two COs, a pair of COs, 125 and 128. The initial amount was 75 in 25 and 128. The second scenario would be a 15, $35 million tax note only in 25, and then a CO for 100 million in 28. The third one would be a hybrid this year, and splitting the tax note and CO 15 and 35 million respectively. And then the last one, which is what Mr. Angst presented this morning, was a new, was on the backup until this morning, is, is doing a 50 million CO, and that amount may change if we introduce more capacity for an FIF loan. And then doing an FIF and a CIB loan in 2026, and then still doing that 100 million CO out in 2028. And so there's a lot of options for the court. There's a lot of information that we know we are throwing at the court today in terms of your options and your next steps. And so that's why we are not asking for, for any action from the court today, but maybe just some considerations for us as staff to start to think through, so that we can bring back and help the court start to refine its, its decision-making process in the next month. So those are the scenarios that are, that are in place today, right? So that's a recap of what the options are for the, for the court. As we move into the project list, which would be the next PDF for the AV team, this is the existing list that the court had adopted as part of our capital planning process. So this is, this was intended to be that $175 million balance that Commissioner Stout referenced earlier. The 320, the 500 minus 325, the 175, this is what that looked like. And so the projects, there's, there was a revision to this backup. Initially, we had one column that said whether it was eligible in 25. We've added the other column to show you that all of these projects at this point in time are eligible for, for debt issuance in 2028. Any changes to state law may affect that, but at this point, with the information we have and the law is in place now, the court is, has the authority to issue debt for all of these projects in 2028, utilizing a certificate of obligation, which was the, which is what we were wanting to discuss with the court today. You can see here that on the bottom of the slide, and I know if we can zoom in a little bit to that box, it's, that's bold outlined toward the bottom of the page. By category, you have various projects and initiatives that are, what's eligible in 2025 that we know definitively the court could take action to issue debt for, utilizing a certificate of obligation, totals about $105 million. And so that's first time water and flood control, some technology and security upgrades to non courthouse facilities like the jail. And then also that new county facility, $34 million is for JPD. You'll note that in the prioritization for that project, Public Works did recommend not to fund the full amount for that project, but rather at the minimum the design, which would estimate being anywhere from five to seven million dollars. And so what's eligible in 25 is that amount. You have the pending, which is going to be the 16 million for the border tobacco building, and then the, the $2 million for the HVAC system. That's at $17 million that's pending in that second column. And then the third column is the projects that are not eligible in 25, but only eligible in 2028. And so those are, that $49 million are projects that we know we cannot issue any debt for unless we were to go out to the voters again at this point in time. And so really, the court's focus and conversation, we recommend that you limit it really to trying to figure out how to narrow that 122, the potential 122, which is eligible and the pending for 2025, down to an issuance amount that the court would like to see, knowing that we cannot do anything about that 49 million. And so that automatically has to be parked in 2028, unless we go out to voters again. But for the purposes of our conversation this morning, that's not really necessarily related to any debt issuance the court may have. Now, you heard from Ms. Angst what your options are in terms of amounts, going from, ranging anywhere from a $35 million tax note to anywhere from 75 to 100 million in certificates of obligation, and there's combinations thereof to consider. And so what we wanted to do is tee this up for the court, allow the court to have a discussion on this. There's some changing circumstances because of the election results since the time that this list was last revisited. It's also a new Commissioners' Court with a new member of the court, and so allowing the court to have that discussion was, was part of that. And so that is where we stand in terms of our overview. And so if there's any questions, happy to answer them, but wanted the court to, wanted to ensure that we brought the court to this point, so you all could have a discussion.
Okay. Commissioner Butler?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to ask to repeat a number.
Yes, ma'am.
For the JPD, the 34 million that's there, that's for the entire project, but you said that we could also split out the design?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. And so it's estimated that that could be in order from five to seven million.
Okay.
We need to get with, with Public Works to, to really start to scope out what that design would be. And that's just roughly 15 to 20% of the, of the existing project costs.
And then the construction could potentially be in 28?
Yes, ma'am.
That's the thought? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Butler?
What did they tell you, 15 million for the?
Five to seven?
Five to seven.
For the design, for the JPD improvements?
Five to seven million?
Five to seven million for just the design. And then the remainder for construction would be included potentially in the 2028?
2028.
Issuance, yeah.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Judge. Is it possible to split the screen to have appear the options that were presented previous to this with, with, with that bottom portion of the list? I, I guess, looking for some direction in terms of when you say narrow the list, by how much do we have to narrow it now? Or what, what are you looking for in terms of direction? And I really do hate to pile on, but I do have some, some projects that I wanted to propose to add to the CO list, and I don't know if now's the time to do that, or if there will be another opportunity for us to consider adding some, some small items here that are consistent with, with the categories, but that aren't included here for consideration right now.
No, thank you, Commissioner. So we're not looking, that should be the, that should be the ultimate goal for this process, right? So there's no need to figure out what your list is going to be today and, and your amount. I think what we're looking for is generally if there's any consensus on, on a finance approach or finance amount, and if there's not, there's more time that's needed, that's okay, because we are planning on coming back several times over the next month to allow the court to continue this conversation. So it's really at the, at the discretion of the court how much direction or guidance or feedback you all want to provide us today. We do have some other information related to this that we do want to share before we conclude the meeting, but by no means are we looking for you all to shave that 105 million list down to a certain number by today. And we are posted for any discussion on this, so any revisions to the list, you know, whether that be additions, deletions, modifications, that's all. that be additions, deletions, modifications, that's all within, that's all germane to the way that the agenda item is posted today.
Okay. Well, then I'd just like to ask maybe then at this point for the court and for staff to consider adding two items in particular that I've seen a need for that weren't included in the original list, but are both related to water and first time water. The first that I've seen, and it's an issue, I don't know if it's specific to colonias or to those within the East Montana Water System, but we do have constituents living in areas of Precinct One that don't have access to water and not because, not for any other reason, but that they can't afford to extend the water lines to their homes. In a lot of cases, they're within a couple hundred feet of an existing water line and they've just been left out of infrastructure that was put in, you know, that was grant-funded or that the county was able to put in. The most consistent calls we get into the Precinct One office are from constituents who don't have access to water and in every case have been living on their property for years. This is not new buildings or, you know, new development. This is, these for the most part are residents who just can't afford to put in their own water infrastructure, which in many cases is upwards of, you know, 20, 30, 40,000 dollars. So what I would like to propose, and I've spoken to the Public Works staff a little bit about this, and maybe as we continue this process of adding, of looking at this project list, I would like to ask the court if you'd be okay considering a small fund, you know, no more than maybe a million dollars. But really, we don't have a lot of data to know how many of these residents we're talking about that would help those residents that are in this particular situation.
Is there a particular area that you're looking at or just in general, a fund that would be available to anyone?
I don't know. I don't know how widespread this issue is. I know that it exists in Precinct One. Like I said, I don't know if it's specific to the East Montana Water System. I know that the Lower Valley Water District does have like a short line water extension program for these kinds of instances. And I'm not, you know, I'm not proposing that it be limited to any one precinct or water system, but just a mechanism or a small fund where we could address this for those residents, existing residents that can't afford to extend those water lines. So that's one. And maybe the ask today is just to allow me to work with Public Works to get more data and bring a figure back for you all to consider. The second one is related to first time water. We have been really, really ambitious and successful in bringing first time water projects to the county, working across the board with different funding agencies. Dig Deep has been a great partner and it's in all of our precincts. What I see in Precinct One, and it's probably in three and four as well, is that we have a lot of unpaved roads in these areas, these like donut hole areas that don't have water infrastructure. So while we're getting funding for first time water and wastewater, we don't have funding to pave the roads when those projects are completed. And so we don't have any road projects on here other than maybe the flood control, but I'd like to request maybe considering, you know, working with Fernie to see if that would be possible to include in the CO list. So when we do go and we put first time water in an area that hasn't had it, we're able to pave those roads afterwards. I think that would really enhance and complement what we're trying to do with the CO projects and really elevate the quality of life even more for those areas that we're able to bring first time water in. So those are the two that I'd like to consider and ask staff to help, you know, at least bring back some data and numbers that we could consider if the court would be in agreement with that.
I've got a couple of questions. So what's the price tag, first of all, on both of these? And what projects are we going to not fund by adding these? Because it looks to me like we have, I mean, it depends on the scenario, right? But, I mean, if we go with scenario A, we might have additional capacity and we wouldn't have to kick any projects off. But if we go with scenario, any of the other scenarios, we would be below the 171 million dollars that we had originally set aside for the projects that are on the list. So, I mean, I think the question we have, I mean, we have to answer is what scenario are we going to go with first? And if we're going to go with the scenario that does not bring in the 171 million that we have destined for the projects that have already been vetted and chosen through a very public process? And that's another issue that I want to bring up is that, I'm not saying that it would undermine the process, but we went through a very public process to come up with this list. And, you know, with all the public meetings, the BoAC and Commissioners Court over the last year. And so if, I just don't want to set the precedent that we're all able to start throwing things back into the pot, because there's probably projects that I would like to throw back into the pot too, that are maybe in my district that weren't on the original list that was vetted by the public and that was decided upon by the Commissioners Court after the whole public process.
A court that didn't include me.
No, I understand that. I understand that. And that's a consideration. I get that, but you were part of the public process. You were on staff with Commissioner Loon as well. And anybody in the public could have brought up those issues during the public process. So it was publicly vetted and, and again, I don't, I don't want to set that precedent and, because to me it seems like the public went through this with us, correct? And I just don't want them to come back and say, well, you didn't even vet this through the process that you went through, because I can see that happen, especially with a CO, especially when it comes to all the people that are out there that don't want us to fund things with COs and the petitions that may come up. This could provide for an issue with that.
I respect your perspective, Commissioner, and that's why I said these two projects that I'm asking for your consideration of are in line with, I think, the spirit of what these COs are intended to accomplish. And so I don't imagine it would be disruptive to the current list that we have or out of line. I watched the process unfold and it was a lot, you know, it was a public process, but the Commissioners Court was very intentionally hands-off in that public process and that included staff members, except when it came back to Commissioners Court for you all to approve, and then you did have a discussion and you were able to move projects around. So from my perspective, I was hands-off the entire time. So I would just ask the court to consider those two and, you know, if we get figures back from Public Works and think it's not, there's no way to fit this in, then I respect that, but I would just ask for those considerations.
And we can't ignore what you said. I mean, these are individuals that they're there, it's just they don't have the money to connect with us. And so independent, I think we really have to keep our, what do we do about that? For someone to be so close and just because they can't afford it, but not necessarily, I mean, I think we have to figure out how to address that.
Judge Commissioners, just to echo on that point that you just made, Judge, we have Rudy on the line. We also have Brad within our audience. And one of the things that I just wanted to call out is with request for that first project on the potential use of COs for this particular project, is there any reason why CO funds may not be used for that type of idea or that type of project? Only to ask Rudy or Brad if you know at the top of your head if that's an allowable expense, but of course noting that if this is something that's important and that has the court support, of course, working with the precinct office so that we can identify alternative funds to support that project, if it is not an allowable expense on the CO side. I don't know, Brad, you want to chime in?
Judge, while Brad makes his way up, if I could just make a really quick comment. So I agree with you, Commissioner Butler, that these are two very important needs. We see that as well with people not being able to connect to a water line, even though it may seem to be relatively close. And then, of course, our paving budget is nowhere near what would be ideal. We would love, I think Norma, Fernie would love to double, triple, quadruple our paving budget so that we could meet all of these needs. So I agree that these are two very important programs. My concern would be like, for example, you mentioned the 1 million dollar for the waterline connection fund. A CO, we're going to be financing something for 20, 25, I think we've even talked a little bit about 30 years. So I think we also have to think about whether that's a good idea to finance a small dollar project over such a long period of time, if it's actually worth it or not. From my perspective, the larger dollar programs are really what are the best candidates for funding, because those are things that we couldn't pay without the CO funding. I would like to work on maybe finding other funds to meet these smaller dollar needs as opposed to issuing a CO that'll end up costing us more in the long run for a small dollar project, where we could have used that capacity for a larger dollar project where it's impossible for us to find those funds otherwise. That's my comment.
Commissioner Corrado?
Yeah, you know what? I think we ought to, I'm okay with our staff taking a look at it and see what it's going to cost and how we can have funding, whether it's through the COs or maybe even the tax notes, because it's a less amount of years that it would be financed. I think we should take a look at it. These are projects that are, you know, very, very necessary for our community. And so I don't want to dispel that we shouldn't be looking into that. Obviously, we should be. And whatever funding alternatives we can find, I'm all for it. I think we need to look into it. One other project that I'd like to discuss, and it is within the funding of what's already been passed in the bond, but I think because it involves something that I think we should talk into executive session, it's a purchase of real estate, I think we need to, would probably better off be going into that. So whenever we can do that, either today or next week, whenever, that's something that I'd like direction from the court and...
Yeah, Commissioner, we can work with you and see if we can, if there's an item that you'd like us to discuss that involves real property, work on posting that in executive session. Might be able to still make the posting deadline for Monday, the 3rd, if you feel you have the information and would like to just have that discussion then.
It is within what the bond, the GO bonds was approved, but rather than, you know, saying it's out in public, because it does involve real estate, I'd rather we discuss that in closed session. I don't know, it won't take long. We could do it today or if the court is okay with it?
Judge, Commissioner, whatever you go with. So what you're saying, get a little bit more information and then go into executive, maybe the following session?
We can post this for as early as Monday, the 3rd, if you all would like, or if the court would like to hear that, the details that the Commissioner has, at your discretion, however you'd like to proceed.
What do you think? Just good?
It would be very brief just to get direction from the court, and then that gives authority for staff to be able to bring us more information.
So look to the county attorney's office.
Yes, sorry. We were just trying to find the correct section so we can give you the correct motion, but we'll propose, if you'd like to go into it now, Commissioner Corrado, then the motion could be, if you give me just one moment, to move it into executive session pursuant, I'll find the code number, but to discuss a real property sale or purchase.
Make that motion?
I will. I'll make that motion. I don't know what the section is. I forget, but...
No, second that. I don't know if you have it on your screen yet, but...
One second. We're adding the motion into the system. Okay, so it's, excuse me, Texas Government Code 551.072. This is to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if a deliberation in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the government body in negotiation. So this is going to be as it pertains to the item that has been posted today.
I saw move. It's not up there, but...
551.072 for real property. Thank you.
Commissioner Butler?
An.
Motion carries. Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session to discuss item 4A pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.072. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action. It is 12:02 PM. It is 12:02 PM.
So today, we're celebrating that there will be three neighborhoods who are now going to get access to wastewater, which is basically being able to connect to the Lower Valley Water District's sewer system.
Wow, it's emotional. You know, we're feeling so happy for our community, especially for the families that we have in the county.
We know that the septic systems that people use are more than 30 years old, and they're causing contamination issues, which are a primary issue for people's well-being and health.
Yeah, it's, so we'll be living with a septic tank. It can be a problem for environmental communities. And now that we're working together with the Lower Valley and the county and getting some fundings for get this project, so we're so happy with that.
It's already started, all right? And it's going to take somewhere around six to eight months.
So at the County of El Paso, we decided to prioritize these types of projects to be able to connect these communities to water and wastewater services. We invested about $40 million of our American Rescue Plan Act dollars that we received from the federal government in 2022. We invested those funds to be able to partner with the Lower Valley Water District to be able to connect these neighborhoods.
It would have taken us another 15 years to come up with the money to be able to do this. So we're very grateful to the county for having sponsored us through this project.
Well, it's groundbreaking for three new hangars. And this is something that we started talking about back in 2013. So it's been a long ways to get here. A lot of people say, well, this airport's like an overnight success. Well, maybe, but it took 55 years to get to this day. We're sitting on a gold mine. This is a, this is a jam. So as the years go on, you're going to see that this will become a regional airport. We're excited, and I know this is a great opportunity for the local residents and for the entire county.
So during the past five years, the county has been successful in obtaining about $20 million worth of federal, state, and local funding to be able to expand services here in Fabens. So with some money from the Economic Development Administration through the Congresswoman's office, we were able to obtain a $5 million grant, which helped fund the design of eight brand-new hangars and then the construction of three of those eight. So by the end of this project, we'll see three brand-new hangars, and we'll have the design for five additional hangars, which will be ready to begin construction as soon as the funding is identified and obtained. And that's certainly going to be something that the county has continued to work hard on, to obtain the funding to build those final five hangars. So by the end, we'll have eight brand-new hangars that can be used by local pilots to store their planes. They can be used by some of our community partners like UTEP. So I'm incredibly proud of all of the investment that the county has made in these past few years and the investment that I know we will continue to make to make the Fabens Airport the best that it can be.
Skateboarding is one of those sports where, you know, you have kids who aren't necessarily into the traditional sports like football and basketball, and this gives them a place to go. It gives them a place to develop a sense of community.
We have Aguadulce, Estrella, Talliegos. This park in particular, Estrella, it consists of new skate parks, new basketball court, and new playground equipment, which is more of an adventure course.
Initially, it was jam-packed, but as the equipment gets older, less, less people were showing up. But now with this new equipment and the new build, I can almost guarantee you it is going to be jam-packed.
So we already have a skate park here in Aguadulce, and we have a basketball court, but they haven't been renovated for many years. So we're going to completely renovate them and create a new skate park, a brand-new skate park.
And this is going to be a much better design. It's going to have a lot more exciting features to it. I think it's something that the community will appreciate. But it will be made of concrete, so we expect it to last longer than I'm going to be around.
You know, I know that the youth of our community, and not just from the outline areas of the county, but inside the city of Pass, are going to come out and enjoy this place. And I know it's really going to be a hit with all the young people in the community. So I'm really proud of that.
Held two public input sessions where skaters told the designer what they wanted to see in the skate park. It's got all the technical street stuff. It's good for beginners, for intermediates, for advanced. I think there's a five-stair, so if you really want to challenge yourself, you can gap down from the five-stair. Or if you're old and you just want to cruise around, or if you're young and you just want to learn, you can flow around the whole park.
And just like always, this, this court has been very frugal with tax money. And this, in conjunction with other grants, is paid for by grant money, grant funding that's coming to El Paso.
This project was possible by a grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife. The grant is a total of $2.8 million, which would be distributed between all the parks. So parks have been a priority for the county for many, many years. We understand how important parks are to our communities.
Our citizens, our, you know, our constituents deserve no better than, you know, a beautiful place for their kids can come out and enjoy.
I just want to thank everyone who stepped up to the plate to make this happen. It's going to be an awesome facility, and I can't wait to roll around with the locals when it's done.
What's more essential than water and wastewater service for the community? And these communities have lived without this, you know, essential service for, you know, four decades, five decades probably, and many other communities here as well. We are thankfully, the county is working on other projects in this community as well as the Lower Valley to make sure that we bring these essential services to the community. This is going to be the start of the first-time water and wastewater project for several communities here in the Canotillo area. We are very, very proud, we're very fortunate actually, that this has really come to fruition. There was funds dedicated for these projects, but the bids came in higher than we expected. And thankfully, with help of the community who came and advocated in front of Commissioners' Court to make sure that we dedicated additional funds so we could get this project, you know, going and started. Otherwise, if the court hadn't dedicated this extra money, we wouldn't be here, and this may not have happened. We're very, very proud of the way that the community came together, advocate, to get the additional funds for this project. And it's just a blessing, and we want to thank everybody that had helped in this, getting this event done.
This community doesn't currently have a park.
Well, this is a linear park for square dance, something we've been working on for, for, you know, a little over 12 years.
We incorporated an area for them to do, you know, activities, walk, and like I said, also a place to gather. So this project will take approximately 150 days. It consists of a linear trail that starts on Montana, ends on Frankie Lane, and it's a 10-foot-wide trail. So it will be a very interactive trail throughout. It will also have native landscaping, and we've also incorporated drainage.
I think it's going to add, it's going to look beautiful. They're going to, well, the trail for us to walk is going to be safer for us, an area designated for walking, you know, with your family. So I think it's going to be something, you know, a great improvement to our community.
Why should people that live in the city have more access to, to the benefits, quality of life?
I've been here since I'm, since I was three years old, I'm 40. So I've seen the whole thing, you know, so the whole improvement that has been in our community has been really great.
From street paving to the park, to the lights, to everything you see out here, I am so grateful to the court because I'm only one vote of five that make, can make things like this happen. Today, we have lights on the lake, and it's jam-packed outside. People are having a good time. And really, this is what El Paso deserves. People are excited about the season. They're excited about their lake. They're excited about the lights. So this is a really good night for families to bond and to have a good time.
So everyone was so excited. One, when all of the lights came on, the beautiful Christmas tree was lit, but then also when they saw our special guest, which was Santa. So now we have a long line of kids waiting to tell Santa what they want for Christmas this year. And that's, of course, what we want. We want children to be able to come, to be happy, to see Santa, get their photo with him, get to see all of the beautiful lights. We want this to be a special time and a special place for our families here in El Paso.
We have 70 different light displays. We have a variety. There's interactive lights as you drive through. Lot of our lights are on display, are sound activated, so as we approach them, they come on. We do have a drive-through along Scarete Lake, so you can stay in your car. You can see the displays. I just hope folks come out, enjoy it. I think it's a good time. I think it's very unique. We really want to make this a fun time for the folks throughout El Paso County.
Oh, I think like everybody should come and check it out. It's pretty, pretty nice out here. My husband saw it on like social media, so we decided to check it out. And we love the lights, the little setup for the pictures, and it's pretty, pretty nice.
El Paso's a beautiful place. Got some beautiful music, beautiful lights, incredible people. We're the best community in the country and the best region. So wishing all of you a Merry Christmas and an amazing, amazing 2025.
Yeah.
Commissioners' Court has reconvened into a special open session. We are on Item 4. Receive a presentation and discuss items regarding the development, implementation, and oversight of the FY 2024 Multi-Year Capital Plan for El Paso County, including project selections, performance objectives and outcomes, performance management, operational management, corresponding financial planning related to capital investments and operational needs, and general capital direction related to the 2024 Capital Improvement Bond and other future public finance instruments and opportunities.
Judge, Commissioners, I know that we are almost half hour past the estimated time that the workshop was going to last. There is still some information that we've not presented. Would ask the court what, how you all would like to proceed, if you all want to move to bringing this information back again on the 10th to continue the conversation, if you'd like to finish out the hour, really, whatever you all would prefer. We look for, defer to you all.
I don't know if we, county attorneys, do we need to make a motion to ask or not? Or just, no?
Eric Rosales and Gag Luenis, Assistant County Attorney. No, sir, we're not posted for action for this item today. You do not need to make a motion.
OK.
Judge, Judge, we have the three public comments that were sent in. If we can go ahead and read them at this time? If we can go ahead and read them at this time?
Please, sir.
Okay, the first one. Good morning, county judges and commissioners. My name is Ruby Ann Gaglio. I am resident of precinct four. As the court plans voter-approved capital improvements and considers future projects, the county has an abundance of opportunity to be a leader. Many areas in El Paso County are prone to the urban heat island effect and flooding, yet few of the capital improvements aim to solve both issues simultaneously. Green infrastructure promises to do just that. Capturing stormwater turns an issue for many residents into a water conservation effort. Instead of having runoff water pool and evaporate in puddles, it can be used to irrigate parks, landscaping, and even create entirely new green spaces for residents to enjoy. In addition to the environmental and social benefits, investing in green infrastructure is also an innovative way to drive economic and workforce development. El Paso County is no stranger to brain drain. We know our young people are leaving because we don't offer jobs in many fields. Local government investment is one of the best ways to create a demand. By incorporating green infrastructure into capital projects, the public has tangible ways to see benefits, and our young people can see their work interests reflected in their community. The El Paso community is hungry for change. Adding green infrastructure to our capital project is one big step in the right direction to make that happen. Thank you, Ruby Ann Gaglio, end of public comment.
Good afternoon, judges and commissioners. Sessar now with county administration. I'll be reading the next public comment. This is from Jonathan Andrew Seticetis. His message is, "Good morning, county judges and commissioners. My name is Jonathan Seticetis. I'm a PhD student at UTEP conducting environmental justice analysis and studying voter turnout trends. I'm also a board member for Eco El Paso. I'm a resident of precinct two. As the court plans voter-approved capital improvements and considers future projects, the county has an abundance of opportunity to be a leader and changemaker. Many areas in El Paso County are prone to the urban heat island effect and flooding. In fact, El Paso has some of the worst heat island effects in the nation. Heat not only drives up costs, it lowers quality of life and endangers marginalized populations. Furthermore, heat is linked with increases in crime because of its impacts on the amygdala in the brain. In addition, anomaly events that introduce more intense floods, rains, will become ever more present as climate change worsens. Few of the capital improvements aim to solve both issues simultaneously. Green infrastructure promises to do just that. Capturing stormwater turns an issue for many residents into a water conservation effort. Instead of having runoff water pool and evaporate in puddles, it can be used to irrigate parks, landscaping, and even create entirely new green spaces for residents to enjoy. Green spaces not only provide areas of congregation, but urban forestry is linked with improved mental health and better air quality. Note that air quality is linked to coronary heart disease, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, cancer, and more. In addition to the environmental and societal benefits, investing in green infrastructure is also an innovative way to drive economic and workforce development. El Paso County is no stranger to brain drain. We know our young people are leaving because we don't offer jobs in many fields. Also, El Paso lacks placemaking efforts that improve quality of life and create areas of attraction. Studies show that entrepreneurship is linked to people that were already living there and enjoyed living in the community, not so much because they moved there to start a business. This shows the importance of placemaking and creating communities that attract people beyond capitalistic means. Local government investment is one of the best ways to create placemaking and demand. By incorporating green infrastructure into capital projects, the public has tangible ways to see benefits, and our young people can see their work interests reflected in the community while improving their quality of life. The El Paso community is starving for change. Adding green infrastructure to our capital projects is one big step in the right direction to make that happen. Just as importantly, these investments can mitigate marginalized communities from the very real implications that harm residents in a multitude of ways. Signed, Jonathan Andrew Seticetis, end of comment.
Good afternoon, judges and commissioners. The next public comment comes from Sydney Gaglio. Good morning, county judges and commissioners. My name is Sydney Monroe Gaglio, and I work for High Desert Native Plants and Keystone Heritage Park and El Paso Botanical Gardens. I am a resident of precinct four. As the court plans voter-approved capital improvements and considers future projects, the county has an abundance of opportunity to be a leader in green infrastructure implementation. I get to spend my days talking to people about plants and wildlife native to the Chihuahuan Desert. Sometimes that happens at the park, Keystone Heritage Park, and El Paso Botanical Gardens. Sometimes that happens at clients' homes during installation projects, and sometimes that happens in community outreach events like what we do every last Sunday of the month at La Nube. When I talk about rainwater harvesting, people often say to me, "What rain? It doesn't rain in El Paso." And I usually respond with, "We see a monsoon season every year, and when it rains here, it pours." And instead of directing that rainwater back into the ground, it gets stuck on the street or directed into stormwater retention basins that are lined by concrete. Now instead, imagine if our street were designed with curb cuts, if rainwater collection basins were installed on homes and business buildings, we save our communities money. We allow water to go back into the ground to recharge our aquafoam instead of sitting on the streets allowing mosquitoes to breed. That then causes us to spray our neighborhoods with harsh chemicals. When I'm giving tours out at the wetlands at Keystone Heritage Park, people are always shocked at the greenery around them. I have El Paso natives and visitors tell me, "There's no way this is El Paso. I feel like I am in California." Then we go on to talk about how El Paso used to look like that all over. Wetlands sat in the valley and extended from Conatiyo to Fabens. The Chihuahuan Desert is a fragile ecosystem, and that's due to specific adaptations that plants and animals here make to survive harsh weather conditions from extreme heat to bitter cold. And when development looks like scraping the desert and the wetlands and plopping building on top of that with no consideration of the plants and land, then we hurt that ecosystem that takes decades to recover. Instead of planting native grasses and trees, we see astroturf and rock lawns that add to heat island effects. The damage that has been done is done. That doesn't mean that we as humans, as we are part of the natural world being mammals, don't have a responsibility as stewards to care for the land, air, and water that give us life and shelter. Building a home and a business building are not inherently bad. How do we do that building and the infrastructure techniques that we use to do so can make all the difference. I'm tired of hearing people say they don't know if they want to stay in El Paso because it is too hot here, and there isn't work for them here because their fields are in sustainability studies and so forth, when we could be making a direct impact on our climate and job market by investing in green infrastructure. Thank you, Sydney Monroe Gaglio. And that completes all of public comments.
Judge Commissioners, just a few items as we close out for today. So again, next steps, next few weeks, we'll continue to meet with the court. The next scheduled time will be February 10th, and then again on the 24th, and again on the 27th, and then looking to finalize decision-making by March 3rd. You saw on Mr. Anx's presentation or Ms. Stiefel that if the court is going to consider utilizing certificates of obligation, we would need to issue the notice of intent on March 10th, which would be the following meeting after the 3rd, to stay on that timeline for us to meet all of the necessary deadlines by the summer, as he described. And so wanted to make sure you all were aware of that. And then also just ask if there's any questions or if the court has any direction that they'd like to provide with respect to the issuance amounts and the structure and the tools and types, or if you want to continue to collect more information and provide that information at a later date.
Judge, if I may? I do think it's very important that we include the potential loan amounts, the zero-interest loan amounts or low-interest loan amounts that we can receive from the various pending grant applications that have already been submitted and were approved by this court for submission. The flood infrastructure funding is an incredible opportunity to deal with some of these issues, these flooding issues that have plagued our communities for far too long. And that's a tremendous opportunity that I don't think we should ignore, as well as the CIB fund for another very important infrastructure project. So I definitely think that any considerations or that these definitely should be a factor that we take into consideration when we're determining any amount of bond issuances.
Yes, ma'am. So we can revise scenario D if the court's in agreement, which was that scenario that introduced the FIF and the CIB loans and work with Stiefel to bring that information back. And then, once we have that, we'll share that out with the court if we have it sooner, so you all can have a chance to review it in preparation for the meeting on the 10th.
Judge? Yes, Judge? I think we need to explore all options in light of what the legislature is considering to restrict us from doing that. I think it's imperative that this court, on behalf of the community, look at all these issues and all our funding alternatives so that we're able to move forward with, you know, a lot, some of the issues where we know that the community is in favor of doing it. And so, and of course, some of the other projects that are very essential to the community, like water, wastewater, and first-time water projects. I mean, it's, I think it's essential that we look at all of these projects, especially now in terms of what the legislature is considering of doing to restrict us. They would really take a look at all our options. Commissioner Stunt?
Yes, so a lot of what we've been talking about is in the context of the COs. But I did want to ask the court if we could give direction to staff to look at putting the Coliseum back on the ballot this year. Again, it failed by less than a percentage point. There were 223,000 votes cast, it lost by 700. And that's despite the fact that we didn't really talk about the Coliseum much early on because of the uncertainty over the BOTA project. We didn't really talk about it at all during the first half of our planning for the bond. It's an asset that has proven value in the community in many ways, from accessibility to the regular events. It's also in the geographic center of El Paso that continues moving east, and we can say that the Coliseum is centrally located. It's definitely easily accessible to the community, hosts lots of large events and small events. There's ample parking, it's an already paid-for asset, it's a historic building with lots of stories to tell, and we know that because of our discussions. But the community doesn't necessarily know those stories completely from the bracero processing to the Italian POWs, to the desegregated dances that were held there. I think what everybody does remember are the memories that they have at that facility. Almost, I think, everybody's first rock concert in the 70s and 80s and 90s probably took place at the Coliseum. And it's not just a singular attraction. However, it's an entire campus that has lots of other amenities, and it needs improvements, hasn't been improved in a significant way. And for the fraction of the cost of a new arena, we could not only have a 5,000-plus-seat venue, but an additional venue when it comes to the hockey team and some of the other things that are on its campus. And so, you know, I'd like to see if the court would be willing to direct our staff to go out and ask the voters once more, you know, providing all that information and being, you know, being much more intentional about our outreach when it comes to this item that we were not the last time. And I think that would really help to push it across the finish line if we only lost by 700 votes this last time.
And we've seen just all these improvements within what they have in their budget, and they just see attraction. People get excited, hearing such great comments about what's going on at the Coliseum, and that's with very little funding. I really believe that it could be, you know, I love, it's a community center, it's a concert, I mean, it's always, we're all always off for it for so many other activities. So I would be very supportive to look at it and give us some ideas on how do we proceed? But I think it's, I think it's very wealth-looking. It just makes a lot of sense.
The consensus from the court on that?
Judge? I'm in agreement. I just want to make sure that we take a look at it in terms of our all-capacity and funding and whatever is available. I'm in favor of making sure that we, you know, give the community another opportunity to do that in light of everything that's happening, that we may be precluded from some of these things. I just think we need to let the community have a voice in what's going up. And I really think what we need to do is have some outreach, like we did last time, but a little more focused. And, because I think that's imperative that we do that with our community. And I just think that we really need to inform the public a little bit better than what we did last time.
Judge Commissioners, absolutely. One of the things that we wanted to chime in on, depending on the direction that the court goes, if the court does consider the issuance of CO bonds in the next few weeks, please know that we have already discussed a different plan and different strategy in terms of what we would do to conduct this outreach, right? So in terms of potential mailers and ads, radio or television, we know that those are far more costly. We also know that they're very impactful. And so, depending on the direction you give with COs, we know that we would want to explore a different outreach strategy. So just know that we're considering different options. We know that last time we engaged with a lot of public service meetings or meetings with the public, we didn't get the attendance that we were hoping for. We know that the engagement would go much further if we did something different to include mailers and radio and TV ads. So absolutely, we would need to consider that outreach strategy as well. I don't know if you have any feedback on that, but we definitely would do something different.
And you'll bring back all of that to us.
Judge Commissioners, in terms of timing for a potential order adoption, to place that on the May ballot, if that's the election that the court would like to proceed, the window for that opens on Monday the 3rd and closes on Monday the 10th, well, on Friday the 14th, on Valentine's Day. But your regularly scheduled meeting, the last meeting, you have an opportunity to call for that election, would be Monday the 10th. And so, we would, we just sent an email over to bond counsel and to a financial advisor to start putting the financial and legal information together for that. How would you all like us to? We'll work to ensure that rather that we are sharing this information out publicly and that we have information with the media about the major decision the court may be facing on calling for the election on the 10th, so that there's transparency and there's eyes on it from the public's perspective as well. As soon as that information comes in, I don't know that it'll be ready for Monday the 3rd, and so we may have to simply send that information out to you via email as soon as it's available. But know that if there's any questions on that information in terms of the fiscal impact or the procedures or the language on the, that's going to be proposed, you can reach out to us, and we'll make sure that we meet with all of you.
Yes, Commissioner Butler?
First and foremost, thank you to the court and to all of the staff members who work really hard to make sure we're having a transparent and comprehensive discussion about the needs of the county. And I think that's what this is, right? This is an acknowledgement that there are so many needs that we have as a county, and we're severely restrained in what we can do with our general fund dollars. And so, you know, I think it's really admirable that the court is so diligent about having discussions about how we can meaningfully fund the needs of our community, whether it be for what we consider to be really essential purpose funding or for things like the Coliseum. My thoughts on calling for another GO election are that I think we should for the Coliseum. I think having the community, giving the community an opportunity to vote on that makes a lot of sense. My preference would be that if we do that, that it's only the Coliseum that's on the ballot. I think there's a lot of uncertainty about, you know, what the courthouse is and the annex is and everything else. That's not to say that we couldn't use this opportunity to have taxpayers weigh in on other projects, but I think having just the Coliseum on the ballot would give the taxpayers an opportunity to really focus in and tell us, yes, we, you know, we want a new Coliseum essentially, or not. And it would be, I think, more manageable for us to be able to communicate the Coliseum project on a bond election than to have a lot of different things included on there. So that's my perspective.
Appreciate that.
So we can definitely work with the team and bring that back. Jose, you said February 10th would be our next workshop before the court to address some of the questions that the court has asked of us today and to provide some additional direction. And then again, with your direction regarding the potential of the Coliseum on the May election, bringing you that information as well, knowing that part of the outreach strategy, determining funding to support a different outreach strategy can also be included in that presentation on February 10th.
And on February 10th, the court will consider the adoption of the order to call the election. So that, I think that was the thing, the point I wanted to make clear, that we, what we'll do is we will place an item on Monday, the 3rd, and in the event that we're able to pull some of these details together, want to make sure that in terms of transparency, that we have a chance to present that information to the Commissioners' Court, so it doesn't look like we went from today's meeting to calling the election in one fell swoop, because the court's action on the 10th, if you are interested in calling for that, would be to adopt an order calling for the election, and then it would be placed on the ballot for May. So all of that said, we'll work on placing a follow-up item for the Coliseum specifically as a no action, but just an informational item on your agenda for Monday, the 3rd. And then on the 10th, if the court is in agreement, you would consider adopting an order to call for that election to be included, for that proposition to be included on the May ballot. And I think from the direction we heard earlier in the discussion, we would use the same exact proposition that was on the November ballot for the May ballot.
Yeah, and just make sure that we're very clear on what the cost is, what the impacts, impact to the taxpayer would be if it, if it, if it presses.
And those, yeah, those are some of the details that we'll work with Stiefel and McColl and putting together and hopefully get a chance to provide publicly ahead of the, the whole goal by presenting something on Monday, the 3rd, is to have a public meeting where that is discussed ahead of the 10th.
I have one, one question. Jose, on the existing, the, the last part of our agenda today, existing capital fund programming, are we going to have that discussion on Monday or at a future meeting?
That, I know that we still have public works staff here that are available. I know that we're coming to, to the hour, and so the court would like to shift that discussion to next week. We can, or we can at least present that information so you have it, and then we can continue the conversation in our next workshop, whatever the court would prefer.
Oh, sorry. I thought we were wrapping up, and I was like, what's? What's the name of that?
Yeah, we can still have that discussion, right?
No.
I mean...
The staff is here to address, if you'd like to continue the discussion. We, we were just trying to be mindful of the time. We, we thought that this would end at noon. It's past the hour. It's completely up to the court. You do still have staff from Public Works in the audience ready to address the court if they wish to continue that discussion now, or we could table it for Monday and bring them back, and they can address it with you at that time.
Thoughts?
I'm, I'm good with whatever the court wants to do. I think...
Schedule anything?
Excuse me?
Well, I mean...
I've got...
We can have it now.
Excuse me?
I'm okay having the discussion now, too.
Okay, it looks like, yeah. Okay, we'll continue.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. So the, the last section of items is a conversation that the court began in November of last year. Following the, the results of the election, we began evaluating what were some of our commitments that we had with regard to funding, external funding that was available for two projects. The Senior Nutrition Kitchen at the Sled Annex, which was one of the capital projects that was on the bond election, and then also the East Montana Annex, which is also one of the projects that was on the, on the bond election. And so, we began evaluating if there was a method of, of meeting our, our financial obligations, because we had outside funding. The East Montana Annex has a funding commitment from the developer, and that is involved in the Tierra de Estepid, the Public Improvement District, to build out some of that space. The developer has agreed to work with the county on, on identifying ways to maximum, do a public-private partnership to construct that facility, which would potentially lower the cost to deliver that project. And then the second, being the kitchen, that has external funding from the community project funding through Congresswoman Escobar's office to build out that Senior Nutrition Kitchen, and there's a funding gap that's required for that project that we estimate, we estimate needing approximately $12 million for, for both of those projects, $6 million each. And so, what we evaluated were the existing projects that we had issued debt for, and there's some existing issuances. And that included identifying some projects that should be closed out and swept because those projects are, are complete. There's also some projects that have seen some delays with regard to stormwater in the Canahterai on First Street that would be shifted, that the fundings, the funds that are there are not necessary to have now, but would be necessary within the next year or so. And so, in evaluating those projects, we came up with approximately $5 million. But the largest project that we were looking to, that we presented to the court for reprogramming was Ascension Road. And so, Ascension Road has come into a few issues with respect to utility conflicts because of some high-pressure gas lines that are there along the roadway. And so, the, the court's direction to staff at that time was to evaluate what all the options were for Ascension Road. And Mr. Fernie Hernandez, the Director of Infrastructure Services, as well as our county engineer, has, has conducted that analysis, and that was shared with you ahead of today's meeting in the agenda brief that Ms. Keller sent out. And the idea would be to potentially, I, look at what the options are for Ascension Road and then determine if we can issue debt, new debt for that project in, in the future, potentially part of this issuance. And then the existing proceeds that are available for Ascension Road allow those to be reprogrammed onto the East Montana Annex project and the Senior Nutrition Kitchen project at the Sled Annex, so that those can move forward. We can take advantage of the external funding and then, and then still completely figure out a way to fund the Ascension Road improvements. And so, Mr. Hernandez is available to answer any questions on, on what the options are for, bless you, on what the options are for Ascension Road that he's conducted. And they range from modifying the, the scope to continuing with the project, figuring out how to mitigate the utility conflict, as well as the restarting the conversation that the court had previously had with respect to the federalization of the project through federal dollars at the MPO. So with that, I'll turn it over to, to Ms. Hernandez.
I'm sorry, Fernie. Before you start your presentation, can I ask you some questions, Jose, about the, the information that was provided in, in the backup regarding the reprogramming? So I'm looking at the, so the possible capital reprogramming towards the bottom half of the sheet. It shows two projects for the CO-23 Series A, one of which is Ascension, and then the other one is another project, the permitting software that has been closed out. But if you add those two amounts, that comes out to $9,477.84 from the CO-23 Series A. But up at the top, where you're proposing the reprogramming, if you look at the CO-23 Series A, those two amounts come out to $11,699.84. So I, I don't under... So the, the amounts should match, right? Because if we're trying to reprogram the funding from the CO-23 Series A...
So, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I apologize. I was pulling up the, the backup. The $9 million and the $3 million from CO-23A, that would come to about $9.4 million?
Uh huh, right. Because, so if you're looking at the top two lines, right under proposed project name, CO-23 Series A...
Yes, ma'am.
Right, that's the $9 million plus the $387.84. So that gives us a total of $9,477.84.
Right, yes, ma'am.
But up at the top, you actually need $11,699. And you have, that's the amount that if you add those two from the CO-23 Series A, that comes out to $11 million.
Oh, no, yes, ma'am. Okay. So I understand what the, what the conflict is there. So the, the, the top table are the, are the projects that would be, that would be programmed against. So those are like the, the Sled Annex, right? And so, what's... Oh, I understand.
It's the summary. So, so I think the top chart is not just those two line items. It's not a CO-23A versus CO-23A on the bottom. It's actually the summary of projects that can be repurposed. So the top four total the 14 one, and then the bottom eight or nine total the 14 one. So I think, Jose, she's taking the first two and matching to the bottom two.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, why they don't match.
It's the summary.
So there is some additional movement that's not, that's not represented here, where we were moving, and we can pull up the, the Excel file. But we were also moving, we were proposing as part of this to move out some, some projects from, between the COs and the tax notes. And so, that's the reason why the math isn't adding up. But what, what's, what we, what will call to the court's attention is that on the bottom table, we're identifying $14.2 million in savings in, across the COs, Tax Note 22 and Tax Note 23C. And then on the top, creating that same space, using that save, those saved funds, would still be able to do that. But let us pull up that information so that we can provide more context, but, but there's...
I think we need to be as accurate as possible, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Of where the money is going to be moved to and from.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Jose, I believe on the top, the money that we're moving the projects to includes some funding for potentially doing a project to help with the Corbin-Sabrano in the meantime?
Yes, so there was, so there was $2.2 million that, that's available for reprogramming under Tax Note 23C that we had set aside. It's not the full amount to construct the Corbin-Sabrano Center, but after the demolition, which is scheduled to start this Friday, partially underway now, we'd have that, those funds available, and we'll work with Public Works potentially to greenscape the space and create a, a very standard park for the community's benefit, so that it's not just an undeveloped piece of land remaining fallow while we figure out how to fund that facility moving forward.
Yeah, but my question wasn't about the tax note. It was just because this chart seems to imply that the funding that's available for reprogramming from the CO-2023 Series A adds up to $11,699.84.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's not actually correct.
Right, and so, let me, yes, ma'am. So let me work on providing the fuller context on what the, what the back, what the other transfers are associated with that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners, Fernando Hernandez with Infrastructure Services, just for the record. I did not have a full presentation put together. It was just more of a, a summary of the options that we, we could participate in going forward for the Ascension project. I guess just a little bit of a back history. When we originally proposed this project, it was a, proposed as a $10 million project, and that was just to go out there and do a, kind of a mirror of the existing roadway that we did, that we did have a two-lane mirror, two-lane roadway, and turn it into a four-lane divided roadway. It did not take into account any additional improvements to drainage, landscaping, illumination, safety signage, and stuff like that. During the process of, when it was a war, or, that's how we came up with the, with the initial budget of $10 million, was just to construct that 8.3 linear, 8.3 miles of a, of a roadway out there. We did come across some issues. Once we started gaining the information from the engineers, we did get the topography of the area, and we did notice that some of the low-lying areas are where we have some of these desert washes that cross, that cross, across the roadway, including to some royals that begin up in the, in the mountains out there and kind of terminate near, near the Ascension roadway. Given these additional information that we did find out during the, during the design phase, and these weren't very evident because of years of erosion have piled up a lot of sediment along the roadway. And so, as, as you're driving down the roadway, you just see these, kind of like these dunes along your shoulders where, where we maintain, and we move out the, the blowing dust and blowing sand. And so, it, it didn't really give a good actual representation of what was going on with the drainage out there. And so, once we, we got all the topography and all the existing drainage out there, we did find out that there is five additional royals that we're crossing through this roadway. Right now, they cross as low-water crossings, so basically the water just washes over the roadway. And so, we tried to, we haven't experienced this in recent years, and so we've not really had to deal with any type of maintenance on Ascension. But the, the topography and the surrounding, I guess, vegetation has led us to, to identify that these areas do exist. And so, in order to mitigate this, we had to increase our design of a stormwater system within the roadway. And so, that's kind of where the, the, we did see that additional increase, right? So we're, right now, we're looking at a shortfall of this project if we were to construct it with the intent that we have to create a four-mile, four-lane, eight-and-a-half-mile road, roadway, including the new, newly required stormwater infrastructure out there. So we're creating a, a million dollars' worth of infrastructure that we did not account for in the initial concept of this roadway. And in order to do that, we had an additional $5 million worth of earthwork, which is to be able to build up the roadway to be able to allow the, the culverts to be crossing underneath. So we have an estimated shortfall, excuse me, of the project of $6 million just for construction as it is right now. The additional issues that we did come across is, we do have several areas where we do have right-of-way conflicts. We do have conflicts with the allocated roadway is not, does not have a consistent 130-foot right-of-way like we have at the beginning of the roadway project out in the, closer towards Horizon area. And so, I know I'm kind of rambling a little bit on, but just a lot of the backstory is that we, we did identify some, several issues that do require additional right-of-way to be able to make the alignment work. And as we were exploring these issues, that's where we stumbled across the high-pressure gas line conflict. The high-pressure gas line conflict is a conflict where we do have about four, four miles of our roadway parallels, take a step back. Our roadway parallels a natural gas line for about seven-and-a-half miles of the existing, and it keeps going south towards the freeway. And so, we do have that, that obstacle that, that parallels our roadway. The issue that we did not have was, there is a section of the gas line that, that jumps to the opposite side of the street, because right now it runs on the southern portion of the street, and then there's a portion that it jumps to the opposite side of the street. And so, this is the one that, that's creating a lot of heartache for our design team. Given that this is a high-pressure gas line, a 10-inch high-pressure gas line for petroleum and other, other gases, it does require that we do not have any type of hard surface or any type of vibrating, vibrating traffic on top of this, this line to be able to prevent any type of damage to the line according to the, the owner of the gas company. And so, in order to relocate that, we're looking at a potential of 200 properties that we have identified to be able to work around this, this conflict. But I guess in, in kind of like summary, you know, we, we've identified four different options that we can pursue in order to take the next steps to move this project forward. The first one, of course, is, basically is to pay for the gas, for the gas company to relocate this gas line. This process, we did identify that the gas company did have a court order to be within our right-of-way, and so it was a settlement that, that was agreed to by, by a previous court. And so, they do have some jurisdiction to be within our right-of-way. We, we did not grant them a easement to be there, but because of the order that was found back in 2009, 2009, I believe, it, it does grant them the authority to be in there. So in order for us to relocate that line, we would have to pay the gas company approximately $50 million for them to be able to relocate that, that portion of the gas line, so it does not conflict with our, with our, our roadway alignment. The second option would be, of course, is to adjust the roadway alignment and acquire the additional right-of-way needed to be able to put our roadway to be out of the, the conflicts zone. And so, that, that, that you can see is our option number two, which comes to like about a eight, a five to eight million dollar price tag on that one. And then the third option would be to reduce the scope, basically to, to just improve the roadway that we do have right now, reconstruct in place. And so, this one, you do have a little bit of more, more additional cost, which is our, our $6 million project, or, excuse me, $6 million shortfall that we had identified. Not only that, this will create a delay because we are having to reconstruct in the exact same space. So knowing that this is a regional roadway that does not have any alleviation or ulterior routes, we'd have to be working within the, the natural flow of the traffic, creating additional bypasses and stuff to be able to, to alleviate some of the construction work zones. some of the construction work zones in this area. And then the fourth option, we're looking as, going back to the, to the federal, to the, to federalized process to be able to seek for federal funding through the MPO. Originally, when this project was submitted, we had a price tag of 40 to 45 million dollars going through the federalized process in order to be able to acquire money through the MPO. Our consultants have designed the project, the project design that we have right now is using the federalized guidelines. So they've given us an actual estimate of $65 million that, that would be what, what the, the funding would be required to be able to construct this roadway at this time going through the federal process. I know, right now, we do have that, that nine-and-a-half million dollars in, in the bank, and so we, we have a shovel-ready project, in essence, with the exception of the utility relocation. So that, those are the options that we cared to present at this time, that we thought were most significant for us to make, to be able to make this decision on how to move this project forward. I know there's some other alternatives that we looked at, but it was a little bit more far-fetched and not really cost, it was cost prohibitive at that time.
Ferny, I'm sorry, the shortfall that you mentioned for the stormwater infrastructure that we've now discovered would be needed, is that already included in these four options?
Yes, ma'am. So if you see, the additional price would be a million dollars for the strain, for the stormwater drainage, infrastructure, and then 5 millions for, for the additional embankments and to be able to cross over them. So that, that's why you see that $6 million price.
In option three.
In option three, yes, ma'am.
But, but that, those same shortfall don't apply to any of the other options?
They do, they do. And so those will be additional to the, the major obstacles, right? So in option number one, we're only showing you the, the shortfall of the relocation of the gas line, plus we'll also still need those six million, additional $6 million for, for the, the drainage and the additional land actions.
Really, that applies regardless of the options, although it's only included?
In option three.
In option three, but really it applies.
Yeah, that, that's a shortfall for the entire project right now, as we, and I do, I apologize, I did not make that clear in this scenario.
Yes, Commissioner Butler?
Thank you, Ferny. This is, this is good to be able to, to see the different options we have on Ascension. You, you, I was able to ask some questions on this last month, and, and I'm looking for the email, but you said, you, there has been a lot of maintenance that's been done on Ascension over the last few years, even since the court took action in 2022 to, to address Ascension.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, so you, you said there were, there was significant pothole repairs and shoulder work that's been done on that since then?
Right, right. So the initial, I guess what led up to this project was in 2017, we did do an overlay of this roadway, and we did experience some slippage along that roadway. And so the, the slippage was, it was a combination of things where we encountered that our, our, not only did our contractor default on the insulation process, but we also had a vendor that supplied us faulty material from our, our oil mixture for our overlay process. And so it was a combination of both of these issues that, that kind of led to the, the slippage of the roadway. We did try to, at the time, we did try to go back and claim through the insurance process, but what ended up resulting was a default, and the, the vendor actually filed for bankruptcy and basically shut, shut his practice down. And so we were left with this, with this issue where we did have slippage occurring along the roadway, the entire eight-and-a-half miles of roadway. And so through the years, we've been doing significant repairs. I think at one point, we did like a, a patch system where we did, we targeted 20 patches in one year, and then we targeted another 20 patches the subsequent year. And then, but, and overall, we, we, because of the known, excuse me, of the known need for this area, we've have to, we've had to alter our maintenance patterns in this area. And so now, we typically do a, go out there and we, we touch up some of the known areas where we do have potholes monthly. And then we also do more intense scrutiny as far as monitoring for, for additional cracking or additional slippages, just to make sure that we don't allow the roadway to get into the condition where it did have, when we're waiting for this decision from the, from the, the court system as we waited for the, for the lawsuits.
I, so, so Ascension is a, is, is a really important connector between Montanavista and Horizon City and Aguadunce. And I, I grew up in Montanavista and going to school there within Clint ISD, grew up traveling down Ascension, you know, every time we had to go to a, you know, Clint ISD function, school-related function, which was often. And I still traveled through there every day. I have family members who live in Montanavista, work in Horizon City, and I went down it recently. I mean, it was really bad for a while with the slippage and the potholes. You were, you know, dodging potholes a lot. But recently, I went down it, and it seemed a lot, a lot better, significantly better. And so that's, that's one of the reasons I reached out to you to say, you know, I've noticed a really big improvement in the, in the condition of the road. And I, I know that when this discussion about Ascension came to the court a few years ago, there was a lot of urgency around it because the condition was so bad. So first, I want to say, you know, thank you for, for working so diligently. The email you sent me says 135 potholes. That's, that's a lot of work, and like you said, it continues. But to, to that end, I'm, I'm, I hope that we could consider this discussion to say, you know, given that the, the road is in, not as in bad disrepair as it was a couple of years ago, and all of the other issues that have come up and barriers to, to the original intention of the, of the first CO that was passed in 2023 to address this, if there's an opportunity now to like regroup and, and reconsider the needs of both the communities that Ascension connects to, and, and see if, if there's a way to enhance the project at all.
Judge?
I mean, so thank you, Ferny, for the work that you've done these past few years to make Ascension passable, because it, it was really bad. We even had a fatality, as everyone knows out there. But the road is still far from being in good condition, and you've just told us that it requires regularly going out there and filling in potholes. So I don't think that we should be suggesting that we leave it the way that it is now, because it's clearly not in good condition. I am a little bit disappointed that when we had this discussion and approved funding for Ascension, we weren't aware of a lot of these issues that have now come up. That, that, that is disappointing to me that we weren't aware of a lot of these issues. That having been said, though, this court did decide that Ascension was a priority because of the liability that it presented. I still receive many phone calls from students, the administration of the ISD, of Clint ISD regarding the condition of the road. We heard from the superintendent regarding the damage that the road causes to his school buses. So I feel that this is still a priority project. I, I am disappointed, obviously, that we weren't aware of some of these issues that have come up. I don't think it's feasible to pay that we're going to come up with 15 million to relocate the gas line. I don't think that's a realistic option. I don't think that it's realistic to expect that we would get 65 million by making it a federally funded program. I just, I don't think that that's reasonable to expect. I, I, to me, the best option is reducing the scope to a two-lane roadway. That's not what we wanted. Ideally, we wanted a four-lane roadway, and that would have been the best thing, but it, that's just not going to be possible, because I, I don't think that we're going to be able to get the funding to do that. I, I think, you know, there's that old adage, we shouldn't let perfect be the enemy of good. Perfect would be having a four-lane roadway. But at a minimum, if a two-lane roadway is a safe roadway that we could provide for those residents that connect those very two, those two very important parts of our county, then I think that's what the goal should be.
I, I have another question, sorry.
Commissioner Butler?
If we went with the MPO to help fund this project, understanding it would increase the timeline, but it would, you know, increase the scope as well and, and really enhance the project in a lot of ways, do you know what a potential match would be on our part if we were able to get funding from the MPO for that?
Typically, we try to do a partnership where it's an 80/20 split, right, where we have to pay 20% of the, of the entire, the project. I know that there are some instances that, because this is one of the outlying communities where it targets some of the economically disadvantaged areas, we do have the potential of saving additional 10%. I'm not 100% sure if this would qualify, but I'm assuming because it's in the outlier areas, it could be a potential that we could meet those qualifications. But, you know, in talking to Mr. Calvo from the, the MPO, he said that this project has been on the MPO's radar as a significant project that, that does exist out there, you know, because it's considered part of the outer loop. I know, right now, it's not indicated within the tip or the immediate, the immediate cycle that we do have, but it is considered part of the regional area that was once looked at as part of the, the outer loop to be able to connect to the, to the Anthony Gap system. And so the regional significance is there. He does feel that it's a strong case because there's no other alternative routes that could be located in that area. The only thing is that we'd have to bring it up through the county, right, and be able to push it through the MPO process as a significant project for the county, and then that we can start the process of identifying and seeking for federal funding on that.
Right.
Because there's no funding at all for this project right now.
Right, so it would have to, it would have to, you know, rise to, to a priority level here at the county and then advocate for that on the MPO board. And 20% of the estimated 65 million would be 13 million potential match if we went that route. If we, if we went with option three, which is to reduce the scope, does that prohibit us from also trying to work with the MPO to maybe phase out the project?
No, it, it does not, right? So like you would see, we would, because the designs are already completed, we would, in essence, rebuild the, I think, I'm trying to remember, I think it's the northbound segment of the roadway, and that's the one that does not have any conflicts with the gas line. And so that way, we can go ahead and just build that entire design portion. And then if we do push it through the funding, through, I'm sorry, through the MPO process, we can, back in turn, be able to upgrade to have the, the multimodal process, which was the bike trails, the secondary, other two lanes, the landscaping, the additional safety lighting. We, of course, we're going to include a portion of the safety signage for this, for this phase, but the majority of the, the aesthetics would come in the, in the secondary project, the, the second phase of the project.
I, so we would be able to do both potentially in tandem, to work with the MPO and also address the immediate needs for, for reconstructing Ascension. Just, just one other comment on, I think, being multimodal would be, I think, a great asset to, to a lot, a lot, a huge portion of the county in this area. Horizon City's done a really great job of adding walking and, and hiking and bike lanes along Horizon Boulevard. And then we, the county, has received a grant from Tech Dot to add walking and bike trails along Greg, which connects to Ascension. So potent, there's a potential to, to bring a huge quality-of-life component, not just to this area of the county, but to people who cycle, to, to create a really big loop between, you know, east, east far east El Paso County all the way around to, to Horizon City. So I see a lot of potential in being able to do both and really enhance, you know, an outdoor amenity that really doesn't exist in this part of the county for, for the residents who live there, but also for, for the cycling community. So I would, my, my preference would be option four, but I think that there's value also in option three and being able to do both in tandem. I, my, my next question, I guess, maybe is, is for Jose, but if we went with option three, does that mean, does that reduce, you know, we have 9 million allocated for Ascension now, are you, is this proposal mean we take just those 6 million from that 9 million to use on, on option three?
No, ma'am, that would be an additional 6 million on top of the 9 million.
On top of the 9 million?
Right, and so it would require a delay. We would have to, because the first 9 million dollars that we do have is obligated under a tax note.
It's the CO 23 Series A.
Oh, I'm sorry, CO, yes, ma'am. And so we do have a time component to that one. And so as we're getting closer towards that, that time component, I don't think some of the right-of-way mitigation will be able to be allocated. So one of the requests would be to be able to remove that, that, that time component in, in order for us to be able to work out the right-of-way acquisition for those smaller parcels that are, right now, that currently exist in our alignment, right? And so that way, we, we do clear that up, and then at that point, we can issue out the project as a $15 million project.
So, okay, so the total would be a $15 million project.
No, I'm sorry, Ferny, what's the time component again?
To be able to, I believe we had to pay out 85% within the first three years, right? Let's hope for the, for the CO.
Yes, so we, the county has to have a reasonable expectation at, at the time of debt issuance for tax-exempt proceeds that we will have the ability to spend or encumber 85% of those proceeds within 36 months. I think at the time that we issued this as a, as a government, we did in fact believe that we had that opportunity. This unforeseen utility circum, utility conflict is something that if we were audited by the federal government, we could point to as something that disrupted the project. So it's a, it's almost a justified disruption. However, we do remain interested in ensuring that we spend those proceeds down as quickly as possible. So I think that's the, the other option for, for the court to consider is that these, this, this money is about two years old at this point in time. And so getting the project restarted after this conflict is, is also paramount to, to our just ongoing capital planning efforts.
I mean, I think it would be wonderful if we could get the project listed as a priority project and included for funding through the MPO. It's just that that's going to take a lot of time. And in the meantime, we have a road that is barely passable for our residents, and that takes up so much of your department's time, just trying to keep it at that very minimal level of passibility. So I, I am perfectly happy to try to seek the option four funding, but I don't think that that can be the only thing that we're doing. I think that we have to do it in tandem with option three, as Commissioner Butler suggested, because we have to do something now. We can't just leave the road that it is, that is there now. We can't just leave the road that it is, that is there now.
Judge. Bernie, is, is there a possibility, since you mentioned that there's, that these low-water crossing issues, can we resolve some of that with some green infrastructure before it? Like, to be able to?
The project does have a bit of a green infrastructure associated with it, to, to begin with, Commissioner. The way it was originally designed was the median was supposed to be depressed to be able to capture whatever falls within half of the, the, the neighboring sides, right? So half of the streets on each side, and then drain into the middle to be able to, to be able to utilize for some of the landscaping that we, we did have planned along that median, right? So it did have a small component of that. But the, the areas that we're specifically talking about as far as for drainage is where we do have a, a large amount of water. We're talking about maybe close to 800 cubic feet per second traveling across our roadway in, in those areas. And they were, when we, when the road was constructed, we, and I mean, we, I wasn't around, because this is, of course, this road's been significantly, a significant road for the, for the county for a long time, but when it was built back in, back in the days, they followed the terrain, right? And so, that's why you can see, it doesn't follow a lot of your standards for vertical curves or any type of, any type of acceleration, deceleration. And so, as you were driving, you, you can actually feel some of those dips where the water was crossing.
Where the water crosses.
Unfortunately, because of the erosion, the wind erosion that occurs out there, we, we do get a lot of moving sand through the area. And so, a, as you drive it, you see a lot of sand dunes kind of piled up along the, the shoulders of the, of the roadway. And so, that was kind of the detraction where we didn't identify those as low-water crossings because of the, the sand that was being deposited in those areas. It kind of obstructs the path of the, the water, but as the water comes, you know, it moves along the, the sediment that's deposited in those areas as well. And so, that's why we're looking at, you know, these $1 million worth of culverts, which are like 48-inch, 54-inch, and some 60-inch corrugated metal pipes to, to be able to allow the, the conveyance of that, those.
Okay, so substantially more water than I thought.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay. And i, if we do, in other words, do the two-lane as, as suggested by Commissioner Elgin, and we buy the rights of ways anyways, right? To redirect it so we don't have to move the pipeline? Would we still, in the future, within those confines, be able to later on convert it into a four?
Yeah, yes, sir. And so, right now, the way, because we, we have the potential to be able to construct the roadway where it sits, right? So there's no conflicts, there's no, there's no issues except where we have those awkward S-curves that, that kind of do that, that weird transition in those areas. So the main goal would be to, to be able to strain out those, those weird S-curves at this point. And then, as we proceed with the $65 million option, or option four, I apologize, we would be able to acquire the additional right-of-way to, to force out that, that secondary lane to be able to veer out over the, the conflicts.
So, we would do that now anyways? Purchase the rights of ways?
We would start the process.
And, and eventually, without having to spend more money on rights of way, we'd be able to do the four? I don't know. It's a tough call, but.
It's an.
And it's only going to cost more later on, obviously.
Right, right. You know, with, with the increase in, in material, construction materials, you know, and I know you're well aware of this, but, you know, during our, our annual paving, we see a 50% increase in our paving materials since 2020. So it's kind of like, we're on unprecedented grounds, being able to deal with so much cost, cost inflation at, at these times.
Thank you, Judge. Judge Commissioners, if you all are recommending and in agreement with proceeding with that third proceed, that still leaves us $5 million short from what Mr. Hernandez has described as estimated for that project. Or, no, excuse me, $6 million short, because it's, we have $9 million in, in the CO-23A for that project. There's an, about $5 million that has been, that we're still recommending for closeout because their projects are complete. That is part of that discussion. And, but there's still going to be about $1 million that will need to likely be added to your CO-23 issuance, or CO-25 issuance to, to fund, or another alternative funding source to move that project along. And so, as Mr. Hernandez mentioned, I think the, the issue is closing that funding gap so that the department can move forward with the project because of the timeline and the time, the time issues that exist. It's just information for your collective awareness as you continue your discussion and decision-making.
Jose, can I ask you a question about the, the Community Kitchen, the East Lata Annex C West? I remember we had had a discussion where we thought that that might be a good project. So I think it was Senator Blanco had asked whether or not the county had any request for appropriations. And I know there was, I think it was during the legislative conference last year that we thought that the Community Kitchen might actually be a really good project that we could suggest to him for potentially requesting appropriations. Did we ever do that? Did we ever have that conversation with his office after he asked us for suggestions? And then amongst ourselves, we thought, well, maybe the Community Kitchen would be a great project to ask for an appropriation for. Did we have that conversation with him after that?
Yes, ma'am. I know that we, the county did have a conversation on that. I'll defer to Ms. Carrillo on, on what exactly was submitted and what was shared with the Senator.
Thank you, Jose. Yes, ma'am. We actually worked on a list to take to Senator Blanco and the entire state delegation just for consideration for future appropriations at the state level. And so, that, I believe, is one of the projects that was included on the list. I'm going to go back with Elisa to see the final list that was submitted. But yes, ma'am, we had a conversation and we wanted to include it, that amongst other projects, on the list for the delegation's consideration. Let me go back and look at the list now.
Okay. And we haven't continued having those discussions with his office?
We meet with him monthly.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes, ma'am. We meet with him monthly now, and that's something new that came forward in the last few months, just to strengthen communication and ensure stronger ties. So yes, ma'am, we are continuing those efforts. But in terms of where those, those projects are, moving along the appropriations side, I am not aware where they're at at this point. I need to look into that. I know there were some changes on the committee side, right? Who, who was going to be on the appropriations committee in the state? And so, let me look into that further for you all.
Yeah, Senate Finance is already meeting. The, the House is, they've, they've created their committees, but they haven't done any committee assignments, and so they're not moving any legislation at all yet in the House, so.
Right.
If the AV team can bring up the, the Excel file, Commissioner, we have a clarification on the, on the funding and just a little bit more context on how the numbers add up. And so, all that comes up on the screen. Can you read the Excel file? Okay. What's going on back there? Okay. So here's a summary of what the changes are to the, the different issuances. And so, there's, there's three debt issuances. There's the CO-23A, tax note 2022, and tax note 23C. And the reason why these are the issuances is because these are the ones that are, that have the language in there that allows us to make some of these movements. And so, and it's important for the court to recall that this was initially structured to try and fund the gap of funding for the, for the, the two annexes. And so, we'll need to go back and confirm that if, based on any direction the court gives us, that what's being proposed would still be allowed. And I believe it would be, but would like the chance to confirm that. But under CO-23A, you can see that there are three projects that were proposed to be reevaluated, and it was Ascension Road being deprogrammed and then added to a new debt issuance in '25. Square Dance not being, Square Dance currently has 2.2 million there, and we would be moving it, moving it to tax note 2022. So this should, that transfer project to CO-23A should actually say, "Transfer Project to Tax Note 2022." And so, the, the budget for construction is in two different accounts, and so it'd actually be easier to just have it in one place to begin with. And so, that wouldn't have any operational impact on the project, just be about where we're paying it out of. And then, we would be closing out the planning and permitting software. And so, when you add those first three up, that totals the $11,699,000, which is the amount that would then be programmed onto the Lata Annex and the Far East Montana Annex, right? So that's the $6 million plus the $5, $699. So that's how that would work. Tax note 2022 is mainly closing out projects. We're not adding anything to that. That's the oldest debt issuance that we have right now. So there's different savings amounts that have been identified. And to make room for the Square Dance Linear Park, we would need to dip into the reserve there by about half a million dollars to make room for it. And so, that would allow the Square Dance construction to not be interrupted by the project. And then, lastly, under tax note 23C, we would deprogram the $2.5 million for the First Avenue Canotio Stormwater Project. And, and then, we would add $300,000 under this proposal to the East Montana Annex, and then that would leave a balance of about $2 million for possibly the Corbin-Sambrano Center. But if we're evaluating funding the shortfall for Ascension Road, we still are a million dollar short. And so, instead of seeing East Montana Annex or the possible Corbin-Sambrano Park, it would be going toward the Ascension Road gap, right? So under, under CO-23A and tax note 23C, those red amounts would be set aside for Ascension Road to ensure that there's enough funding on top of the existing funding that's there And then, we would recommend that if the court was going to pursue, if to deprogram those, that those also be added to the new debt issuance that we are proposing in 2025. So we would add the Canotio Stormwater Project to the, the CO issuance in, in 2025, and then potentially the $1 million for the difference in Ascension Road at this time.
So Jose, I'm sorry, I didn't understand. So with Square Dance Linear Park construction, that was money that was not used, or the 2.2 million? So that tax note, those funds are going to be transferred then to the CO, the 2023 Series A?
So there, there's construction money for Square Dance in two different places?
Okay.
And so, what we're doing is we're shifting, we're, we're taking the 2.2 out of the CO, and we're making the account in tax note 22 larger in the same amount. And then, the savings that we have in the CO, we could add to, we could add that funding on to the annexes or Ascension Road.
Okay.
So it doesn't, it doesn't interrupt the project?
Okay.
It's just that there was, there were, the accounts were, when we issued the debt, we had a design and a construction account in two different issuances. And now that we've, now we're reconciling, we have an interest in trying to close out our old issuance as soon as we can, because we're coming up on three years on that.
That's the tax note 2022.
Yes, ma'am. And so, all of those savings, you know, we're still going to recommend that that still be, that we still kind of do this, you know, absent this court's discussion on how we reprogram those funds, so that we can close out '22. It would be helpful to add to the construction budget for Square Dance under '22, and that would still leave 2.2 million in available proceeds under CO-23A.
So Square Dance is going to be funded completely through the tax note 2022?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. Yes, that sounds, that makes sense.
So we can update this if the court is in agreement, and then with Ascension Road to plug that $6 million gap that Mr. Hernandez described.
I have a question about, so are you asking us to take the $6 million from what could go to the Far East Montana Annex and put it towards Ascension instead?
Well, that, that's an option, right? The other option would be to still pursue this, but then add $6 million to the, the new CO, right? So those are, those are both options that the court can, can discuss and give direction to us on.
But our only option for funding the Far East Montana Annex would be through this reprogramming of funds?
Right. We cannot issue new debt for, for that or the Lata Annex. That's correct.
But we can issue new debt for Ascension.
Yes.
Is the Far East Montana Annex a project that might be on the appropriations list that we requested from Senator Blanco's office?
I'm looking at the list now, Commissioner. And your question was on the kitchen or the Far East Annex?
Actually, both.
On any of them?
At first, it was about the kitchen, because I know for sure, I remember talking about that one.
The kitchen, for sure, is one of nine projects that we submitted to, to Senator Blanco's office. I did check in with Elisa just now. She said there hasn't been any movement, but we'll definitely circle back on that. And then, to the, to your question on, could it be something that we sent to Blanco, I, as long as it's not debt that we get into, because obviously, that's something we cannot do, I think it could be considered. Currently on the list, we also have the East Montana Annex build-out already identified.
Oh, okay.
So again, we don't have any movement. We don't know where that's at. But in those nine projects sent to the state asking for funding from them, those two projects are in the nine that we've asked for.
There's, there's a, an urgency on the Far East Montana Annex for a couple of reasons. One of them is that we have a public, a private partner who already has half of the funding allocated to this and is ready to go whenever we are. And, and also, one of the intended purposes of this annex is to get our, our JP 62 and our constables out of their manufactured building and into, into a, a hard shell facility. I'm sure, you know, we've, we've all heard about the, the struggles that they're having out there at JP. My office is going to visit them tomorrow, but, you know, we, we, we all know that it's, it's an urgent need for them. So, so my, my preference, and I know it's a bit, big ask, to add this funding on to future CO project lists, but I think we have an opportunity to move quickly on the Far East Montana Annex. And that would require, though, that, that the court consider adding that project to the, a future CO.
To just add a little bit of context to that, we, we have engaged the developer to determine what exactly the amount would be. The $6 million was an estimate back in November. We'll need to, we need to follow up with him because he was going to go back to look at what his pricing would be, knowing that a public-private partnership yields savings to the local government typically. And so, there, there may be, the, the need may not be $6 million for that particular project. And I think the same might hold true for the Lata Annex and just some very, very superficial conversations with, with Ernie and Community Services. It may be able to value-engineer some of the, the project to, to lower the amount that we might need as well for, for both, for, for that project as well. So we do need to work on getting updated estimates for your ongoing discussion for both of those.
Judge, I, you know, in light of what's happening now and what could be in the future, I think we need to act to try and get both of these projects done as best as we can at this time and make arrangements for that. I don't know that we can count on the legislature giving us money for this, so.
I wouldn't count on it.
I, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't count on it. So I'm thinking we, we need to just do whatever we can within our means to try and get this done, both. It's my position. They're both important projects, obviously, that we need to get done.
So I've, I've got a question. So on this register, you have available for reprogramming for Corbin-Sambrano Park, 2.1 million, but you also suggested that that money be taken and used for Ascension?
Well, it, it depends on what amount the court would consider, right? So.
Because if we can put Ascension on a CO?
Right, so if.
Then that would have to take place, right? And we could use that money for the Corbin-Sambrano Park.
There's a few options. The first one that we've kind of discussed has been, we're $1 million short on Ascension, let's add that to the CO and use the existing proceeds to keep most of it funded under the existing debt. And then, the second one that we just discussed was moving that $6 million gap that was in the gender brief that Mr. Hernandez described on to the CO, and then keep the $9 million in proceeds. But if you're going to, if you're going to add Ascension Road on to the CO, there, there may be some consideration to just add the full amount that's needed, which would be $15 million, Ferny? That's correct. $15 million, and then you could use this debt, and then you could finance those, those two annexes and then the, the park improvements at Corbin-Sambrano. So those are, I think. So those are, I think those are the options that are in front of the court.
But it would mean adding more to the COs?
Right, fifteen million more to the CO.
Yes.
Or replacing other projects.
Or replacing other projects, exactly.
Sixteen million, sorry, I misspoke on that.
Sixteen million? That would be my preference, Judge.
To add the full amount to the CO?
And get these three projects funded now.
And if we're looking at the issuance, right, the options that were shared with the court earlier for option scenario D, including the FIF loan and the CIB loan, that fifty would then bring that capacity down to thirty-five as an issuance amount for you to consider?
For twenty-twenty-five.
For twenty-twenty-five.
And that amount is likely, that CO amount would likely come down as we revisit and increase the FIF loan amounts, right? So right now, we have forty-one million. And so as we add a little bit more to that capacity, that CO would come down, right? Those are, everything obviously needs to sum up to zero. So that would be, there'd be a change on that. We'll work with Steve Ful and getting updated numbers on that as soon as we can.
Is that two point one million for the Corbin-Sambrano Park? Is that sufficient for doing what needs to be done? Or will we have to identify funding in another, from another source to get that project taken care of?
I know that Mr. Bishop has been in ongoing conversations with some private sector partners in the area who might have an interest in working with the county on that. So that two point one million could supplement some of those efforts from Marathon, for example, to beautify the site, you know, so it might be like a one-to-one match. I don't have the details on that, although I know that his conversations have been fairly productive with the company.
And Jose, correct me if I'm wrong, some of the funding already identified for Corbin-Sambrano was coming from congressional funding?
Yes.
That may be affected and impact the total number of what's actually needed at that project.
There's the bishop.
Mr. Bishop has entered.
Mr. Bishop has entered the room.
Entered the room.
The church is in session, the bishop has arrived.
Well, he is dressed in all black with a white collar.
It was perfect timing.
Oh, man. Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners, Joel Bishop with County Administration. The current project at Corbin-Sambrano is being phased in through, with, working with MMK. They've divided it into three phases. Kind of a more pleasant design of a park-type concept that fits into the full design, given pending the full funding. But additional funding from the court would be beneficial to that as we don't, we don't have any confirmation on any other funding sources at this time. And certainly, the federal funding is, it will hopefully still be there that we got, but it may not be because there's still a question mark over that. So any additional funding would be helpful to keep the project moving forward from what was already there. As Jose mentioned, we are certainly in talks with the private sector and other potential funding sources with that project, but we are far from having anything.
What's the amount of federal funding that we were supposed to receive for that?
Well, the federal funding was eight hundred and fifty thousand, and that was for dirt work. And that was granted, but again, as we know, those.
We haven't gotten that fund that hasn't been disbursed.
We haven't got there yet, yeah. And we also had the opioid funds and the ARPA that has already been, that's helping fund the demolition that's been going on and will hit the main building literally tomorrow, so.
Question, Judge. Apart from the Corbin, the Ascension budget, I was in here in twenty-twenty-two, did it increase from the original twenty-twenty-two to now? Or is it just the same and then we're adding the extra?
No, it did increase originally.
It did increase already?
It was proposed to be a nine and a half million dollar project. But as we're going through, we have identified the six million dollar shortfall.
The six million? Besides that, any?
Right, right.
Any other?
No, that's what we have identified right now, yes, sir.
Okay.
We hope nothing else.
Huh? I'm just saying because it's been taking quite a while that maybe now we're talking about, you know, more material costs than we didn't anticipate. I just want to make sure that we're not, nothing else is going to come up.
The nine million was for, I'm sorry, the nine million estimate was for a four-lane road. So this is reducing the scope significantly at the same and six million dollars more, so it's.
So in a sense, it did, it just.
Right, 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 yes, sir.
Just, we're getting less.
Yeah. If you were, I believe the, when I was looking at the cost estimate prepared by our estimate, our consulting firm, they had estimated the, just the earthwork and the pavement for the roadway, a little under twenty, twenty-nine and a half million dollars for that four-lane roadway. That's not including any type of illumination, not including the signs, that's just straight asphalt.
Yeah. Well, the good thing, Court, is that even under the proposed bills, they're not going to take away for roads and water issues.
For the COs, yeah.
Hmm?
For COs.
For COs, yeah.
Judge Commissioners, my computer's died. My mic died earlier.
What did you do to it?
I don't know. I feel like I'm going to die. I know that this has been a very long meeting. We certainly thank you for the discussion and the guidance. I think we have some work to do in terms of bringing back more information. We've taken inventory of everything that we've discussed today and can start to provide updates on this so that you all don't feel like, after all of this information sharing, that you have to go through a list of decisions. But we'll track that. We'll bring some of this back as early as Monday, including items related to the CO. Excuse me, the bond election. And, you know, we'll confer with Mr. Hernandez and Public Works on this and see if there's some appetite to reprogram some of those funds and continue that conversation on Monday, the third, and then again on the tenth and move that along. So we'll bring, we'll be adding those to your agendas in the coming weeks.
And just as a final commentary on the, I mean, we had some public comment here talking about green infrastructure and working on, working to try to integrate that into our projects. I mean, I agree one hundred percent with what the, with what folks have said. And, you know, we've been trying to work on that. And I think we should continue as a court to tap into those resources and to that expert, and those experts that we have in the community and continue to work with them. And I think Mari and Sito in our offices can help get you in contact with them and make sure that we get that taken care of too, that we're mindful about the green aspect of everything.
Yes, sir. And the way we have structured the GO and CO issuances was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in each issuance for Green Works and then one percent Project Enhancement Fund. So the numbers will be below, Commissioner, I think you referenced one seventy-one, and that's a result of having a one percent Project Enhancement added layered on top and then the seven fifty layer on top of that. So that's how we get to the maximum amount. So we will continue to evaluate what that looks like, but we are, we'll restructure that as we need to.
Yeah, just so the public knows that we have already taken into account that we would add some funds for the green infrastructure to our projects. I'm hoping that, you know, I know we have a lot of pressing issues for our COs, but I'm hoping that we can add some more to that as we had already planned, maybe even a little bit more. And there is some opportunity along the River Trail, but because the River Trail from Vinson this way is on the opposite side where the water flows from the mountain, where an opportunity would lie for some green infrastructure water to do that is from Vinson all the way to Anthony because it is on the east side of the river where the water would come down. There's an opportunity for us to work on green infrastructure there for the trail, so.
Okay, Judge Commissioners, thank you again. I think that'll wrap up the item for today, and we'll see you all soon next week. Thank you.
And this concludes today's meeting at one fifty-five PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.